If I can have everyone take their seat, please? Ladies and gentlemen, I'm gonna call to order this special town meeting. Today, over here, quiet! Today is June 26, 2018, and I'm opening this special town meeting. The time now is 7 o'clock. We had a quorum present at 114 voters at 6:53. Yay. The tellers, Mr. Basler, Mr. Pepe, and Mr. Armstrong, have been sworn. The warrant having previously been declared properly, notice with the constable's return of service, and as tradition dictates, we're weaving the reading of the warrant. Ladies and gentlemen, if you can all rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, I would like to cover the rules with you. Town meeting is ruled by town meeting time as Kingston bylaws dictate. If you wish to address town meeting, raise your hand or step to the microphone, wait to be recognized, then step up to the microphone and state your name and address before you speak. During debates on articles, please keep your comments focused on the articles and do not make things personal. Let's remember to respect each other, and only one person may speak at a time. If you have a point of order and you're raising a question, is the speaker entitled to the floor? Is what the speaker is saying proposing irrelevant, illegal, frivolous, contrary to procedure? Is any pending action frivolous, irrelevant, illegal, or contrary to procedure? Then I ask that you yell out "point of order." They are not seconded, nor debated, and nor amended or reconsidered. It's at moderator's sole discretion. If you have a question of privilege which raises an issue about your rights and privilege to be at this meeting, your safety, dignity, integrity, volume, temperature, noise, interference with your ability to hear, speak, or participate, then I ask that you yell out "question of privilege" and that we address that issue. I also remind everyone, please do not approach people on how they vote. We all get to vote as we see fit, and we should not be confronted or in any way humiliated or intimidated about our vote. If you have a motion to amend, you can make the motion, but then you must put it in writing, and it cannot be debated until we have that in writing. Motions to reconsider pursuant to... I'm sorry. Can we shut those doors back there, 'cause we can't hear? Thank you. Motion to reconsider is made before the end of this session, 'cause we're hoping the night... tonight's theory is short and sweet, folks. Let's get it done tonight. So, we're asking that any motions to reconsider be made and voted at this meeting. Otherwise, if we don't finish tonight, it would be at the next... by 10:00 a.m. tomorrow morning. If you have a motion to call the question, step to the microphone when you are called. Ask for a call of the question, motion to move the question. You cannot debate first. I need to leave the doorways open for fire safety code, and I ask that everyone be seated so that everybody else can see and hear. And if you want to have conversations, please step outside. Again, I don't think I need... we've been here just a month ago about civility, but I just remind everybody, it's okay to disagree, it's okay to have different views. That's what makes us special. The time limits, as I've set before, there'll be two minutes for everybody speaking, and I ask that you don't come up a second time unless it's completely new information, but you will be limited on a second time up, and that is it. I have to remind everyone that... or not remind, I want to tell everyone that Mr. Gallagher has advised me he forgot his glasses. So, on the old waving, you might want to be really big, 'cause I know he's the one who usually helps me and sees people's waves. So, be exaggerated, be, you know, as if you're a movie star. All right. Those are the rules of the meeting. Does anybody have any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, let's move right on to Article 1. Article 1, ladies and gentlemen, is going to be moved by... oh, I'm sorry, the opening motion. I forgot I didn't have one, that's why. My error, I didn't print. So, opening motion will be moved by the chairman of the Board of Selectmen.
Move that the following non-residents and non-registered voters be allowed to enter and address the town meeting. Jason R. Toleman, town council; Kate Federoff, town council; Joy Blackwood, superintendent of schools; Matthew Dash, water department superintendent; Jason Silver, building commissioner, zoning enforcement officer; Tina Callisto, Betty, human resources manager; Meredith Raficki, assistant assessor; Mary Gurney, conservation agent; Carol McCoy, town accountant; Robert Downey, town planner; Cia Stewart, library director; Paula Rossi Clappi, council and aging director; David Aiken, Pyramid Management Group; David Gilmore, Pyramid Management Group; and Robert W. Galvin, Esquire, Pyramid Management Group.
Do I have a second on that motion? Here in a second on that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Bouchard, the motion on Article 1, please. And if you have your planning board votes, or you want me to just get them as we go? Thank you. Okay.
Move that the town amend its zoning bylaws by adding a new overlay district bylaw as printed in the warrant.
Thank you, Mr. Bouchard. I have a second on that. That being seconded, I have Board of Selectmen favorable action 500. Planning Board favorable action 500. Finance Committee favorable action 400. Mr. Bouchard, if you'd like to address your motion.
Yes, thank you. This is a mixed-use redevelopment overlay district. We have been talking to the people at the mall about revitalizing and doing some different things up there, and they came to us. They've worked diligently with Tom Coulter, Jason Silver, Paul Gallagher, Rob Downey, and others to try to come up with this overlay district. And they came and went and requested certain things, came back. It's been a back-and-forth thing, and we have arrived at something that we think works well enough for the mall and works great for the town of Kingston. We have people here to answer questions on anything that you might have about this, but I will tell you this: In this mixed-use overlay district, one of the things that the mall has requested is the right to, by right, build a hotel, 150-key hotel, that would be located in the front of the mall near Rustic Bar. We think this is a win-win for the town. Second, one of the other things they requested was the right to, by right, put in solar, either rooftop or something to do... some of the t-tops in the parking lot, which would... both of those things would have to be reviewed, would have to come for a site review, a site plan review with the town and... what was I gonna say? With the planning board in town of Kingston. So, those things would, by right, but they have to be reviewed, and they have to have a site plan review and what have you. The third thing is housing. They want to do some housing development on the end where Sears is. They want to put in many units, one and two-bedroom units, and a small amount of three-bedroom units on the top so that would have a view of the ocean. We think this is a win-win for the town. There might be some children that come in there, but very few. We think it's... we'll also invite some, maybe some tech companies and some things to come to the area, because we've been told by our planning groups and people that if you have the housing, then the businesses will come. They're looking for young people that can live in a place that they don't have to buy, that's one or two-bedroom, and then they can work in somewhere. So, we're looking... we think this is a win-win for the town. If people have questions through the moderator, Jason Silver, the building commissioner is here, he has more details than I have. Tom Coulter has some... might have some answers if you have issues with traffic and what we're working on to try to deal with any kind of infrastructure problems. Eric Crone, I know, has volunteered to speak if you're worried about the schools. He's on the school committee and how that might impact that. David Aiken from Independence Mall is here, and he is willing to speak and answer questions that anybody might have regarding their intentions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bouchard. At this time, I'm gonna ask our building commissioner, Mr. Silver, if you would come up. I want everybody to understand what's happening here, so that everybody does. This part of this article is to pass this zoning bylaw. So, right now, it would just be the creation of the bylaw. And so, Mr. Silver, if you can tell us a little bit more about the process that will follow.
So, thank you all for coming, and I certainly appreciate, as many do, your attention to this. We've all worked hard on it. In this bylaw, what it does is create additional economic opportunity. Specifically, in this case, it's directed at the Pyramid Group's property. So, we've identified, I think Tom had mentioned, three different things that the Pyramid Group has looked at: a hotel, solar, and housing. And so, we worked through those three specific things to create this article, to address those needs or those requests. The hotel is more or less an as-of-right with site plan review, very similar to many other uses in the bylaw. And the concept behind that was that the existing facility is underutilized. Parking lot's clearly big enough, there's many empty spaces, and the hotel, in current infrastructure, would more than likely be more than adequate to support that, and it would be reviewed at site plan review. The solar is a federally, as well as locally, encouraged use, and so we don't really find any obstruction or need to look at that use from a problem, but therefore would look at it from a site plan review. Is it in keeping with what's appropriate for the area? And that's what that would go through. The third element, the housing, is the one that we had the most concerns over and put the most level of scrutiny on, and that is involved with a special permit process. So, it's a two-component process. This bylaw would make the housing, not the first two, but the housing go through a special permit process where it goes through site plan review, which looks at the site and the existing site as it relates to its own self, and then it also would look at, through the special permit process, the impacts that it has on the existing infrastructure in the surrounding area. So, that's distinctly different from the first two. So, that's more or less the format of this bylaw, is to structure those three specific uses and outline the process under which the applicant would have to come before the town to ask for those three things.
Thank you, Mr. Silver. If you don't mind, if you can hang, if you don't mind hanging, I'd appreciate that. Mr. Keating, Finance Committee?
Unless you're speaking personally.
No, good evening. And let me start off by saying that the Finance Committee unanimously supports this article. And as a committee, we often hear people talk about the concerns of rising taxes in Kingston, and yet, as a community, we are often voting on increasing our town expenditures without increasing our revenue to offset these expenses. One of the most sensible ways to improve our financial position in this town is to adopt measures that make Kingston a more business-friendly community and to diversify our sources of revenue. So, tonight, we're presented with an opportunity to demonstrate whether or not we want to be a business-friendly community, or if we want to discourage further investment by business owners in the town. So, the zoning articles on the floor tonight give us a potential to draw new revenue to Kingston, at the same time help strengthen one of our largest tax contributors and one of the largest employers in the town of Kingston since 1989. So, before we decide to vote on the changes, I think we should ask ourselves, you know, really, what is the Pyramid Group want to build, a hotel and residential development at this mall? And I'd say it's a result of the advancement of smartphone technology and proliferation of online shopping. So, we know that brick-and-mortar businesses have seen a sharp decline in recent years, forcing malls to have to reinvent themselves and adopt new business strategies to ensure their survival. So, you've probably noticed already Kingston Collection has increased its number of entertainment facilities and restaurants, and today, are people increasingly more likely to spend money on experiences rather than stuff. The days of pure retail shopping are limited, possibly. So, the Pyramid Group has demonstrated its commitment, in our opinion, to remain in Kingston and has invested a large sum of capital already into the mall, making the property more desirable. From a financial perspective, the construction of a hotel and a residential complex in Kingston Collection has the potential to stimulate business within the mall. Guests from the hotel and individuals nearby the residential complex could utilize retail shops, eat in the restaurants, spend money at the entertainment facilities. And not only does this expansion have the potential to grow the mall's business, but it could also possibly create more employment opportunities here in Kingston for our residents. Now, the Finance Committee looked at this from many angles, and our primary concern was the impact on town services, particularly our school system. And many people have expressed their concerns about the impact of the town budget, specifically the costs associated with enrolling students. This committee does not see it as an issue, given most of the proposed residential units featured one and two-bedroom, and there are a limited number of units, possibly three, but very few. But this is primarily for young professionals, working individuals that want to commute into Boston from the nearby MBTA or take the highways close by. And while the proposal does include a couple of those three-bedroom units overall, we did not see this as a reason to outweigh the merits of this proposal and should no way justify in a reason to prevent Kingston Collection from moving forward with the construction. Moreover, Kingston schools have capacity to add students, and despite increased housing levels in the town over the five years, enrollment in the schools has averaged... on average, has remained static. So, the Finance Committee wants to point out that when an individual student enrolls in Kingston schools, we have to understand that the cost per student does not automatically increase as many believe it should. Substantial portion of the school costs are fixed within the student population parameters. And after having discussed with the superintendent of the schools the impact about the increased enrollment, we learned that Kingston has capacity to increase its students and that the residential complex does not pose significant risk of overextending our school services and resources. So, after having looked at the impact of Kingston in a holistic manner, the Finance Committee believes that the benefits of supporting these articles far outweigh any of the negatives. And supporting these articles reaffirms the town's position as a business-friendly community and one that's committed to protecting the interests of not only the residents, but its business owners as well. And supporting these articles strengthens the business in the mall, but encourages new business and increases the potential to create new jobs, both during the construction of the hotel and ongoing for years to come. So, we believe the Pyramid Group has demonstrated its willingness to reinvest in its business so that we can... so that it can prosper and survive in the 21st century. And it's our chance as a town to reciprocate by supporting what this committee believes is a prudent measure intended to contribute to the improvement to the financial stability of Kingston. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keating. Any further debate? Yes, Mr. Haas, Mr. Pepe? I see two hands.
John Haas, 96 Summer Street. Other than all the attributes that we've just heard, I believe that this will invite further development in an area of Kingston that has been long overdue for development. Having a hotel there, additional housing will invite further development in that neck of the woods, and I think that it's all gonna be real positive. The tax base that we need, I believe, is going to be a definite asset and more than offset anything that might affect the schools. But the biggest attribute, I think, is basically saving the Kingston Collection. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haas. Mr. Pepe?
Dave Pepe, 509 Elm Street. I'm all in favor of this. My concern is just town services, like septic systems... or the town sewage, rather.
On the town sewage. Mr. Silver, can you address that? Or... okay, great.
First of all, I'd like to say that the project alone is assessed at potentially over $40 million, and it's...
Yeah, it just got turned on, sorry.
The project in and of itself is assessed at north of $40 million for the total investment for the community, so that shows you where Pyramid is looking to invest. As it relates to the infrastructure, as we discussed earlier, the hotel on the existing lot is not likely to negatively impact the existing infrastructure as it relates to sewer, water, because the existing facility is underutilized. The Sears would be demolished, and components of the existing mall are, again, empty. So, we don't anticipate any major needs there. We do anticipate that when the residential comes on, that there could be impacts there, and that's why that special permit process exists. If those infrastructures don't exist, the residential structure will not as well. So, it has to be vetted out. There's no way we could put or allow any of that stuff to go up without those things in place. So, as it relates to those, and these are hypothetical, and I really don't like to talk anecdotally that much, but we do have plans in place. Those involve Mass Works grants, as well as partnerships with the existing Pyramid Group to try to look at those infrastructure issues and address those through that process. So, we do have potential answers to it, but at this time, there are no specifics. We're not in any way feeling as though we can't solve those things.
Thank you, Mr. Silver. Ms. Dubois?
Thank you. I do also believe...
Name and address, sorry.
I know I called... Sorry. Pine Dubois, 93 Elm Street.
Thank you.
Thanks. I have a few questions relative to the project and the article. Can you tell me, I saw the handout from Pyramid, and it showed the footprint of the mall. Is this proposed development limited to that already-developed footprint?
Mr. Silver, do you have that, or does Mr....
The footprint of the existing facility and the footprint as proposed would not increase or decrease any impervious and actually would decrease the impervious surface and increase greenery, based on the current renderings. So, it will change the footprint, but the overall impervious will decrease.
Thank you. I see in 4.20.5.1 where you're talking about the multifamily apartment dwellings, 300 units, no more than 5% of the total having more than two bedrooms. Is that what you're saying? Is that 5%... 5% will have... So, how many bedrooms are we talking about? I guess that's the better question.
So, there'll be a direct ratio of permissibility for three-bedroom units as it relates to the one and two. So, they'll only be able to allow... allow... they're only allowed to, under this regulation, have three-bedroom units at a 5% ratio to the one and twos. So, we've calculated a maximum in the entire complex, if it were to be built out of 15 three-bedroom units.
Great. And can you tell me, since I also serve as chair of the Affordable Housing Trust, how many of the apartment units will be affordable?
Based on the existing 10% affordable inclusionary bylaw, it would be 10%.
Can I request of both Pyramid and the town that we bump that up to 20, given our substantial lack of housing that's affordable for Kingston residents?
I think... it's not part of the article, but I think that both Pyramid is...
I just want it. I want it on the record.
And let me finish?
I want it on the record, I didn't finish.
I get it. I heard you, and that's why I was just saying, it's not part of tonight, but I believe mistake, and you've just heard that, correct, from Pyramid? Mr. Silver, you have heard that? Okay. So, obviously, that will be taken into consideration, but it's not part of the article.
Well, I would like to... I would like to state, and we have stated both to the planning board and the zoning board, that the Affordable Housing Trustees would like to be invited into these kind of substantial discussions with developers so that we can begin to meet the requirement of sociability and equitability in town.
So, you... that would be the special permit process, then, right? Because housing, Mr. Silver, is under the special permit process?
Yeah, that's right. That's right. I'm not talking about the hotel, I'm talking about the apartments.
One person at a time, sorry. Mine, just one person at a time.
That's correct.
So, Mr. Silver and Mr. Bouchard, can you both look at, including the Housing Trust, Affordable Housing Trust in those special meeting notices? It seems...
Absolutely.
I couldn't figure out where you were. All right. There you go, Paul.
Thank you. And it's my understanding, based on the previous development, that there is an existing sewer plant there. It's a little unclear to me whether the town is intending to maintain that there or whether you're considering some other option. I'd like a discussion on that, and thank you very much.
Through the moderator? If I could defer to Elaine.
Yeah, I'll call in. Yep, Elaine, if you can address, is there an existing one on site, and what is the intent?
There is an existing plan on site, and this will all come through with a site plan review. We have been in discussions with Pyramid Group on participating in the enlargement of our plant, but in... also to that, they do have their own private system that they can invest in that as well. So, these are the ongoing discussions. This article is to create the district, and everything else will come through the site plan reviews. And we're already in discussion on that, and, you know, conversations have started, but this particular article is to create the district.
Thank you, Ms. Fury. Ma'am?
Hi. Renee McDonald, 26, Ortalani Circle. I think you just answered my question, but just to make sure, 'cause I believe we heard that the sewer plant in town is already maxed out. There were issues about hooking up things in the center of town. So, this is a completely separate sewer processing plant?
Thank you, Ms. Fury.
Yes, Kingston Collections has their own private system that they manage and maintain. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fury.
Madam Moderator.
One sec, sorry. Yes.
Madam Moderator, I congratulate you for starting on time and the voters for being here. Since there's several speakers, I've heard, I've heard no objection. I move the question.
I will take it, but next time, just move the question. Having moved the question on, and that being seconded, all those in favor of moving the question, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Minimal opposition. On Article 1, all those in favor of Article 1, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Hmm? Yeah, yeah, yeah. This motion requires a two-thirds majority vote, so I'm going to say that that motion carries with... by a voice vote, declared, carried at two-thirds majority. Moving on to Article 2, Mr. Bouchard. Yes, does somebody have a... All right, I have a motion to reconsider on Article 1. I need to know who made it. Somebody get up and give their name, please. That motion to reconsider is seconded. Ladies and gentlemen, a vote on this would be, if you wish to reopen debate and re-debate it, then you're going to vote a yes means to reopen and restart debate, and no vote means putting it to bed. All those in favor of reconsideration, say aye. All those opposed?
No.
Motion does not carry. Mr. Bouchard, sorry, back to you again.
I'm ready. Move that the town amend its zoning map by adding a new overlay district as printed in the warrant.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Here in a second on that. I have Board of Selectmen favorable, 500. Planning Board?
400.
Planning Board is favorable, 400. Finance Committee is favorable, 400. Mr. Bouchard, would you like to address your motion?
Yes. Now that we have a mixed-use redevelopment overlay district, which was an amendment in our zoning bylaws, this is to amend our zoning map. So, it is to place that zoning on the mall's property so that they can utilize this new district. We have the same people available, including Rob Downey, to answer any further questions. I hope it's self-explanatory. We have a new zoning. We want to place it over the mall's property. Simple as that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bouchard. Mr. Harlow?
Good evening. Daniel Harlow, 31 Howland's Lane. My only issue with this is that I think it starts setting precedent for spot zoning, which I think can become selective. So, I just, again, I just wanted to voice my concern with that, and that's really the only thing that I personally see issue. I understand the purpose of the overlay district. I see why we're doing it for this particular property, but I just think that when you start getting into spot zoning, it just becomes a dangerous slope, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harlow.
Patrick Cullinan, 26, Old Mill Road. I'd move the question.
I don't think you're gonna have to. That was... Instead of taking two votes, will you withdraw your motion? I can't hear you. I'm asking you, withdrawing your motion, there's nobody else to debate.
That's fine.
Okay. He's withdrawing his motion, we can go right to a vote. He's withdrawing his motion, we can go right to a vote on Article 2, seeing nobody else wanting to debate. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? This motion requires a two-third majority. I'm going to announce it as a voice vote, declare that it carries with a two-third
Madam Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Creed.
John Creed for Bayberry. I move reconsideration of Article 2, and urge a no vote.
Thank you, Mr. Creed. I have a motion to reconsider, that being seconded. Ladies and gentlemen, again, like the last time, if you want to reopen debate and talk about it further, you vote yes. If you want it to end, then you want to say no. All those in favor of reconsidering, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion does not carry. Ms. Murray. I know, yeah. You're close enough. Yes. Move on, if you can move Article 3, please.
Move that the town vote to transfer $50,000 from free cash to secure design services for modifications of the Kingston Public Library.
Second.
Having a second on that. Ladies and gentlemen, Board of Selectmen voted 5-0-0 favorable. Finance Committee? Mr. Pike, did you have a vote?
5-0-0 favorable.
Finance Committee is 5-0-0 favorable as well. Ms. Murray, if you can address your motion?
Thank you. So, as the community voted down the larger project of a library, it still leaves our library with needs that need to be addressed. The HVAC system is going, the roof is going, there's probably some other things going, but basically, a work group has been put together to hire someone to do the reporting, to come up with development plans and different options, and to see if we can change some rooms around, maybe close in the middle piece. The estimate that has been provided is between $30,000 and $50,000. And then, once that's settled, the work group would come before town meeting with the options.
Thank you, Ms. Murray. Mr. Bonsek? I'm assuming you're heading that way.
Yes, I am. Peter Bonsek, 335 Howland's Estates. So, we want to spend another $50,000 on a library that, prior to the going for a new library, we had a library assessment building committee, I believe, and I believe that was about $75,000 spent on that. And I'm not sure, I don't have the figures on how much we actually spent for all the designs and architects for the possible new building. So, I just see money here. I don't know why, one, we have to hire somebody to try to figure out what's needed at the library. We have, the employees have been there for a long time, we have a director that's been there for a long time. Why is it that all the time, we have to hire somebody to tell what they probably already know? Now, some of the designs that they had gotten for the new library and the proposed, possible redoing the library instead of a new one, why can't we come up with some kind of idea with the plans that we already paid for, instead of spending another $50,000? I personally don't believe that the library has that many people in there that they need to expand. You know, I know they're moving their meeting room, they're making it to a team room, but to this day, I still don't think that the figures they gave us for the amount of people that go to the library actually go to the library. You can't count a beeper, or a door beeper, when you go in and out, divided by two. Because I sat there one day, and most people who did go, when they were in and out within three minutes. So, I don't think it's used as much. I think we need to repair what we need to repair. I'm being told that we have the, being on the Capitol Planning Committee, they have the HVAC that needs to be replaced, the roof needs to be replaced. We have a facilities manager that's-
Five-second warning.
Five-second warning?
Yeah, I'm giving you a five-second warning.
Oh, okay. All right. So, that's the reason why I don't think we should spend another $50,000 until we have our own people look in there and have somebody, a facilities manager who's supposed to be experienced, they tell us what's going on.
Thank you. I believe you were up, and then I have the gentleman over here. No. There was no question asked. Go ahead.
Steve Clinch, 3 Bailey Circle. Obviously, we've reached the point, those who've worked at the library and those who've worked on the library, have realized that we have to make some changes in the existing footprint, and we need to change the library in ways to support the community, in ways that haven't been supported in the past. More learning opportunities, more technical training opportunities, and we need the professional expertise of people who are in this field to help us through this. This isn't something that the employees of the library can handle without this addition. So, on that basis, those of us who've been involved feel strongly that we need some help from outside. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clinch. Sir?
Thank you. Bob Weber, 2 Alden Street. I just heard a vote for Articles 1 and 2, in which we're talking about 300 new apartments, increasing the size of the town, the growth, and we're talking about, and we gave up in the previous sessions, a $6 million-some-odd-dollar grant. And now, we're talking about needing an architect, and an engineer, and potentially a project manager to redesign what the existing building can support. I don't understand why there's any objection, but I'm really, I use the library a great deal, and I hope people will continue to use the library and recognize that if we're going to have more people in town, we need a growing library. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Ma'am?
Ellen Cook, 70 Elm Street. I think my first point is the fact that you cannot take plans that have been designed to build a new building and apply those to renovate an existing building. There's just no similarity, and it won't work. Moving forward, we want to make sure we are making the most efficient use of the space that's there. To do that, you need engineers, you need architectures, and we have to do this before we can even repair the HVAC. If there's going to be any use of space that isn't currently being used, that means the HVAC has to be changed from what's being done now, not only replaced. So, you use experts so that in the long run, you're saving money, and we want to do this in the most efficient way possible.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. I then have Mr. Harlow, and then I have Ms. Murray.
Daniel Harlow, 31 Howland's Lane. Two clarification questions. One was, weren't there estimates already presented for how much it would be to repair the HVAC prior to the library going forward in the fall?
Thank you, Ms. Harlow. Ms. Murray, can you address that?
Yep. Prior to the plans being made for the new library, they did have an estimate done, but now where they're looking at expanding the interior, fixing the storage room, and possibly closing in that, like, square area that's outside, that would change the utilization of the HVAC system.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Murray. Ms. Harlow?
One other question. I believe it was presented at the beginning with regard to the roof. If it's my proper recollection, wasn't the Library Committee in front of the FinCom recently and stated that the roof had years left on it? So, I just wanted clarification on that, if that's still the case or not.
Four years, I believe.
One second, Ms. Murray. Were you, you are on the Library Committee?
No, I'm not.
Okay, then I need somebody from Library Committee. Mr. Armstrong is probably the best one to...
First of all, generally speaking, when you design buildings, whether it's commercial building, residential buildings, you try to do them with a 50-year effective life. So, that building is at that point where-
Can you lean in just a little bit more? I can't quite hear you.
The building's at a point where you need to have a thorough review. Specifically to the roofs, there's a question of the roof surface itself, which is an old rubber-and-stone ballast roof. There's also a question of the structural integrity of some of the ceiling joists, because whenever we get snow that's more than a foot and a half, we have to shovel the roof because it deflects so much, it pushes the sprinkler heads down. So, that's the things we can, that they'd be looking at, and I don't think that the existing data that they might have already gathered will be ignored by whoever's reviewing it, but I think this is a way to do some value engineering, to be able to come back to the town, to the voters, and say, we'd like to do this, this amount of cost, we'd like to do that, with this amount of cost, so we gotta, everyone have a better idea of what to spend on the money on.
Thank you, Mr. Armstrong. Mr. Harlow?
Thank you, Ms. Armstrong, for the response. I still think my question remains, was it presented to FinCom that the roof had years left on it or not?
Okay, Mr. Armstrong, were you at the FinCom meeting? Ma'am, were you at the FinCom meeting? From FinCom, were you at the meeting? Was somebody at the meeting? Does anybody know if the library said to the FinCom that the roof had a million years left, or whatever time?
A million years?
No. Time left, you know.
We did have a meeting with the library during the budget process, and yet, yes, the conversation did take place. The library director had indicated that there was a little bit of life left in the roof, and it certainly aligns itself with the conversation here tonight, that if there is a little bit more life left in the roof, that we have a little bit of an opportunity to do the diligence that the library trustees are asking for this evening. I do also want to just remind folks that years ago, I sat on the Capitol Planning Committee, and the library director has been raising the issue about the roof for many, many years. This is not a new issue. This is an issue that has been on the radar for quite some time. We have had some Band-Aids placed on it, and we have done the best we can to extend the life of the roof, so, yes, there is a little bit more, but I wouldn't, I'm not a roofing expert, but I wouldn't quantify that there are a million years left on the roof, Janet.
There'd never be a million.
Does that answer it? Dan?
But all right, so we have, structure of the roof is gonna alter, that's gonna require in that.
Thank you.
Mr. Harlow, you all done? Ms. Murray, you're up next?
Can I?
Nope, you're either up or you're down.
I'm not up.
Okay, Mr. Warren?
We've heard a couple of people talk about how they use the library, and a lot of folks in this room do, but what it boils down to is the library is a municipal building, and it has to be maintained, and we need to do the work that is ahead of us to make sure that it can continue to serve the community as we grow. In December, the town voted and declined a new library. We did that knowing that these repairs were coming and that these updates were needed. I spoke to Brad Norman, Kingston's facilities manager, and he made it abundantly clear that $50,000 to secure design services for modifications to the library would be money well-spent. Brad made it clear that we cannot and should not move forward with any repairs to the major systems until we figure out how we may be modifying the footprint. Again, possibly closing in that center atrium, changing the envelope of the building, so on and so forth. I ask that the body votes in favor of this article and gives staff and trustees the tools to carry out the work that we asked of them this past year when we voted down a new building. We asked them to make the best possible use out of the existing building, and I hope that everybody votes in favor of this.
Thank you. Ms. O'Donnell?
Yes, I'd like to move the question.
Ms. O'Donnell, move the question. Getting a second on that. All those, everybody knows, move the questions, ends debate. All those in favor of ending debate, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Ladies and gentlemen, the motion on Article 3, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion carries with minimal opposition. Is there a motion to reconsider? Mr. Beard, is that it?
Yes. I can see you, Peter.
Mr. Beard is moving to reconsider Article 3. I have a second on that.
Second.
Ladies and gentlemen, like the prior two, if you want to re-debate this article, you're gonna vote yes. If you don't want to re-debate it, you're gonna vote no. So, all those in favor of reconsideration, say aye. All those opposed?
No.
Article 4. Mr. Warren? Yep, we got it.
Just read it.
Yeah, just read it. Just so everybody knows, there's been a different motion that's gonna be moved than what was in the book. You can proceed.
Okay. Move that the town negotiates a purchase and sale agreement for the purpose of acquiring the property at 46 Main Street, Kingston, containing .46 acres of land, more or less as shown in the assessor's map, 68 Lot 123, with the acquisition of the property subject to a town meeting vote at the next special or annual town meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second on that. I have Board of Selectmen favorable 5-0-0. I have Finance Committee, is that unfavorable 0-4-0, or is that neutral?
Yes.
I can't remember the middle one. Unfavorable, okay. And ladies and gentlemen, just I want to be clear on this, so everybody understands, that the motion as moved now is advisory. It's not binding in any way, because the Board of Selectmen has the right to start negotiations. They're getting the temperature of the room. They want to know what the citizens want. So, that's what we're really looking at here. So, Mr. Warren, if you can address the article, or the motion?
Thank you. At last year's town meeting, the body moved that the board investigates or looks into the purchase of this property for the purpose of extending Smith's Lane. A purchase and sale agreement fell through, so now we're actually in a position where we can start looking into traffic studies, negotiating a purchase and sale. Kevin Donovan, when he was in town, spoke with Mass Highway and Old Colony Planning Council. I'm sure some of you noticed that there were, there was some work being done to track traffic. What we're asking for tonight is support from the body, and again, just to get a temperature of the room, to do what was asked of us at last year's town meeting, move forward with investigating whether or not there is a deal to be made here.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Mr. Bonsek?
Peter Bonsek, 335 Howland's Estates. It says the description is, for the articles, the persons property will allow the town to extend Smith Lane directly to Main Street. For what purpose do we need to extend Smith Lane to Main Street?
Sure. So, preliminary studies from Old Colony Planning Council haven't come in yet, but looking at the 2007 study, they did believe that removing traffic entering Route 3A from the western end of Crescent Street would reduce congestion occurring between Crescent Street and Howland's Lane, I'm sorry. There's a lot of turning movements happening in a short span, contributing to congestion and delays. Similarly, those conflicts away from Howland's Lane would likely improve safety by consolidating both Crescent Street exits onto Main Street into a new Smith's Lane at Main Street intersection. In terms of planning and engineering, it makes it a lot easier to control traffic with a roundabout or traffic signal, if Kingston chose to pursue that. The studies from 2007 were, you know, the results were that doing this would ease congestion, make for safer roadways. We're still waiting to see what they learned from the more recent study, but again, what we're doing tonight is just getting a temperature of the room and seeing whether or not this is something that we pursue.
Thank you, Mr. Bonsek.
What's the total cost, then? If we buy the property and if we extend Smith's Lane?
Sure.
Well, that's, we don't really, I mean, that's not really what's on, it's whether or not they should start negotiations. The cost and all that would come in at the time when they come back to town meeting. This article is no longer to purchase the property. This article is to allow the Board of Selectmen to negotiate, to start the process, but the voting of buying it with prices and all that will come to town meeting. Just want to make that clear to everybody, this is not to purchase land. This is now advisory only.
So, if this passes tonight, what you're saying is that you're not gonna spend $225,000 just for them to be able to talk to see what they can get a price on?
Right. There's no money now assigned to this article. None.
Okay, so, okay, I guess my last question would be, this is the only reason, safety as it is now, is the only reason why this is being done? as it is now, is the only reason why this is being done?
Is that a question?
Yes, it is.
Mr. Warren, is safety the only reason that we're looking for this? Do you want to address that, or do you, Ms. Fury? Ms. Fury, address it.
Well, can I rephrase that?
One second.
Set a safety and traffic, does this have anything to do with the hotel that's gonna be being put in to allow more traffic, or deviate traffic from, I'm not sure. I want to find out, because it seems to me when they're gonna ask to do, when originally they were asked just to extend it, there was no excuse, or no, no, that's what I'm looking for. No reason why it was being extended other than safety purposes. If we want to do safety, we can put a light at the end of both ends of Crescent Street, save a lot of money. So I want to know if this is any other reason why this is being done?
Okay, so, he gave his opinion, but if you want to get up and address the issue, is this being done? What I'm getting is, beyond safety, are there any other issues? And is this darkly correlated with the potential hotel?
No, it had nothing to do with the hotel, because if, as Josh said, last town meeting, there was an article on town meeting floor for us to look into this, and Kingston Collection hadn't, wasn't even in the picture yet for the hotel. So it has nothing to do with the hotel. Will it help? It probably will. Is there anything else besides safety? Well, I think safety's a pretty good number-one choice on why we should do it, but as the Old Colony Planning works with us, and Mass Highway works with us, there'll be other things, other positive things that come out of this, and that's the process we want to go through to give you more information if it comes down to that, we want to purchase it. This is a preliminary investigation, and we'll have more answers next time, which is why we're not asking for a purchase tonight. We're just asking for, what do you think? Can we go forward?
Thank you, Ms. Fury.
Just to get back to the safety, that, like I said, you could put lights in the end. I'm not, you know, I'm all about safety myself, but you know, you want to come up statistics of what's, what has happened there, but if you want to be safety and save a lot of money, you put a light on each end of Crescent Street, and it saves us a lot of money.
Thank you, Mr. Bonsek. I don't know who was up first, I'll go over to you.
Jean Coleman, 20 Howland's Lane, two questions. I'm wondering if you guys have the results of the study that was out? I think it was a traffic monitoring study. At the end of several of the, in the vicinity around it, the roads had those black strips. And I'm also wondering if speed would be considered, obviously with Howland's Lane, preferably, but right there on 3A and Smith Lane, if that speed limit would be lowered if there's gonna be a traffic light there? Thank you.
Mr. Warren, can you address those, or do we need?
I think Paul's.
Mr. Basler's behind her. Mr. Basler?
To answer her question, yes, right here, I got the results of the speed studies for Howland's Lane and the Crescent Street stuff on Friday. I've been digesting it. One of the reasons why we're proposing this, Mr. Bonsek, is because in the next few years, the cottage company's gonna develop over 600 units of housing. So we're not worried about the traffic just in Kingston, we're worried about the traffic in North Plymouth coming through the town of Kingston. Besides the mall development and the cottage development, Mary O'Donnell's property has a development, perpetual housing. We are, as your town employees, your town visionaries, we are looking for the future here. I moved to the town in 1970, down, down, down the nook. We had no problem back in 1970, getting in, getting out of the nook, going up to the transfer station, going to Plymouth. That was over 40 years ago. My job as your highway superintendent is to project what's gonna happen down the road. I think the purchase of this property is a valuable asset to control the amount of traffic in the south end of town. It will also alleviate some of the issues as your highway superintendent, and be people coming into my office saying, "We need a light at Howland's Lane." You just can't put lights on state roads, you need to have crash data. And fortunately for the town of Kingston, there has not been enough crashes or fatalities at the intersection of Howland's Lane and Main Street that warrants a light. Adding a light at the end of Smith's Lane, extending Smith's Lane to Smith's Lane, uh, Smith's Lane to Main Street would alleviate the traffic, it would help the congestion on Crescent Street. According to the traffic council, OCPC just gave me, over 5,000 cars a day go down Smith's Lane. Over 2,300 cars go out of Crescent Street. This is only going to increase as the population of town increases, and as the population of Plymouth increases. I wish we could put a toll plaza on 3A in Plymouth and Kingston and collect some funds. We can't do this. I encourage that we vote in favor of this purchase, or this, looking into this, as looking forward to the future of the town of Kingston.
Mr. Beard?
This is not address the Howland's Lane speed study, that's a total different thing. I really haven't had a chance to digest those numbers yet. When those numbers, when I digest them, I'll bring them to the town administrator through the selectmen, and we can discuss it at the next meeting.
Do you have an answer to the question, would the speed consideration then become into play in regard to that?
The way it works for speed surveys in the town or in the state is, they put the traffic counters out. Now, the speed limit on Route 3A right now?
No, I think she asked if they would be reduced.
No.
Would the speed, would the speed limit be reduced? I believe that's what she was asking.
The speed limit will not be reduced on Main Street, according to my history and knowledge.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Basler. I had Mr. Bouchard, and then I have, I think that's Mr. Harlow on the right. So, Mr. Bouchard?
Many of the things that I was gonna say, Mr. Basler said, but this has been something that myself and Paul Basler, Tom Bott, and others have been discussing for years, because that piece of land is very valuable to us, because if we don't get it now, and somebody else moves in there and puts a business there, we won't have that opportunity later. So I think the time, if we're gonna look into this, even at least look into this and study this, the time is now. With the development that's going on in Plymouth, we're gonna be requesting that they help us with this intersection. If we get the property, it only makes sense to get the property. In addition to asking Plymouth to help us, we're gonna be asking the state to help us with a grant. What's the name of that grant?
Mass Works.
Mass Works Grant. With the things we have going on William Gould Way, the mall, possible O'Donnell property, the 40R, we might be right in line to get a Mass Works Grant. If we put all the pieces together and get all our ducks in a row and have that property, it gives us the opportunity to do something. If we don't have the property, we don't have the opportunity. And I think it's, it's small money for what it, even if we don't do it now, it's very important that we get the property so that in the future, we can do something. Someone buys that and puts a business in there, all options are off the table. We need those options, we need to study this, and we need to get a hold of this property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bouchard. Mr. Harlow?
Corollan Harlow, 31 Howland's Lane. Just wondering if there's been any discussion with regard to widening Smith's Lane and/or taking of property under the Fifth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution concerning that? Thank you.
Well, it's not the Fifth anyhow, but is it? But widening, who wants to address widening Smith's Lane? Anybody? Mr. Basler? Is there any discussion on widening of Smith's Lane?
There has been no discussion in my tenure with the town of Kingston about widening of Smith's Lane.
Okay. And the taking of the land, that would come down the pike in regard to, just so Mr. Harlow you understand, if there is gonna be a taking of the land, that would come into play when the Board of Selectmen was negotiating or dealing with the property. That's a specific finding or specific circumstances that can apply on a taking. Mr. Coulter? Then I have Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Tom Coulter for Village Path. I think it's very important for the body to understand the process that cut us to this point. It was the Board of Selectmen that was asked by this body to research that property because it was for sale for $250,000. By the time, shortly after that, the deal for $250,000 fell through. So what the board is asking is the Old Colony Planning Council to give us a evaluation of those two intersections, at Crescent and at Main Street. Crescent ranked as a D, Main Street ranked as an F. So it's our responsibility as, as, as our public servants that work for you, to figure out what we can do at those intersections and who we can get to pay for it. So the Board of Selectmen, in their wisdom, struck the $250,000 from this deal, because frankly, they don't believe, and I agree with them, it's not worth $250,000. The only one it's worth anything to is the town of Kingston. You've asked for this town to be run like a business. So we're asking for your advice to approach Cumberland Farms with no money in our wallet, which is what we're asking you to do. We're not asking for any money, because we think we're the only potential buyers for it. We think it's only valuable to us. We think it gives us an opportunity to increase the grades of those two intersections to something much better than F or a D. So all we're asking this body to do, and if you say no, we got lots of things to work on, that's okay. We're asking you for your advice, should we reach Cumberland Farms with no money in our pocket, to see if we can strike a deal based on the belief that we're the only ones that want the property, which will give us an opportunity to go to the state and see if they'll invest in the infrastructure improvements to make those two intersections safer. I think that's all we're asking for. That's the direction the board gave me. We're not asking for any money. Allow us to go into the room and see if we can make a deal that's great for Kingston. That's all we're asking for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coulter. Ms. Sherman? Ms. Sherman?
Susan Sherman, 215 Main Street. I'm very disappointed that this was moved tonight. I didn't think it was going to be. I understood that, from the selectmen's meeting, that they wanted to do all of this stuff and that they want to get this grant. Smith's Lane is a lane. What are we doing here to this town? I think what we have to look at is some of our huge areas, like getting off at, I don't know the exit numbers, but the old Howard Johnson's. You can't even get off there anymore without waiting in line way back behind the bridge. Cherry Street was removed. This is the problem. Our state removed the exit on Cherry Street for the wonderful Route 44 that nobody uses because of, why, we know why nobody uses it, because of the rotary in Middleborough and five lights. We need to deal with the state on this. I urge this town not to turn Smith's Lane into a highway. I really strongly urge you, vote no on this.
Thank you, Ms. Sir. Come on, let's keep business going.
David Kennedy, 13 Copper Beach Drive. The way that I read this article, it doesn't state that this isn't something that's advisory and that we would be voting on this at next annual town meeting. So for us to move forward, this needs to be modified, to be put in there, because if it does not...
It's already been modified by virtue of the motion. The motion is what actually is the power and the granting authority, and the motion does not do purchase. So you want to?
Yeah.
I'll reread it to you so that everybody understands what the, how the new motion under the article, because it's lesser included. When you're looking at the four corners of a warrant, of an article, then anything within that warrant can be, article can be moved. And so they're doing the lesser, which is, move that the town negotiate a purchase and sales agreement for the purpose of acquiring the property at 46 Main Street, Kingston, containing .46 acres of land, more or less, and as shown on the assessor's map, blah, 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 with the acquisition of the property subject to a town meeting vote at the next special or annual town meeting. So it's only advisory to ask them to negotiate a potential purchase and sales agreement, and then it would come back to town meeting. So that has altered the underlying article.
Okay.
It's lesser included. It's, in other words, we're not going right to the purchase.
Okay.
All right, so that was good, but just so everybody understands that, that's how it's before us. So thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Mr. Harlow?
Daniel Harlow, 31 Howland's Lane. Couple quick questions. Just for the record, do we know what the actual result of the vote last year, the temperature vote was? Was there a card vote taken for that?
No. It passed.
Okay. I just wanted to get it on the record. To Mr. Basler, the number of cars on Main Street, you mentioned Crescent Street as about 2,300, and Smith's Lane as approximately 5,000, I believe. Were there numbers on Main Street?
On Main Street?
Yeah, during the traffic study.
All right. Mr. Basler, do you have those? I'm sure they're extraordinary.
I don't have the numbers from Main Street, it only addresses the intersection with Crescent Street, either the north end or the south end, there's nothing really on Main Street.
There's not on Main?
Okay.
I know I do it about four times a day, so...
Yeah, no, I thought they had, I thought they had the little air pressure sensors right on, right on Main, right a few tick left off of Howland's Lane.
That might have been Old Colony and not this one.
Okay, I thought it was all done at the same time. Having lived down the nook, well, my whole life, there was a comment that traffic is, at Howland's Lane is caused by Crescent. A lot of the traffic, in my opinion, is caused actually from 3A, from Main Street itself. So my question is, is if there's already that much traffic on 3A, and there's gonna be even more traffic that's coming through 3A, and we put a traffic light just up the street from Howland's Lane, is that not gonna cause further traffic jams, especially in front of Howland's Lane? Now, I don't personally care from my own perspective, I'm just wondering about long-term effects of having possibly more than 5,000 cars, most likely than not, on Main Street, hitting a traffic light and backing up? If Howland's Lane was one of the major concerns in alleviating traffic there?
Mr. Basler, can you address that, and the impact of a traffic light has on traffic? I mean, I'm assuming, okay.
No.
So, I don't think we have any expert to actually answer that. I mean, Ms. Fury, I know you're looking, but do you have any answer? Do you know that whether lights impact and reduce actual overall?
That's not gonna be my answer. We have, but we don't have these answers because we haven't pursued it.
Okay. She's just saying we don't have the answers, because they haven't gone to the point of getting them from the sources that they want to go to.
And then just one last question.
And then you're gonna be out of time?
Yep, that's fine. Well, we get an answer from the state with regard to the great, with regard to the grant prior to us potentially purchasing it, should we end up negotiating it? Or are we gonna find out after we vote in the fall? That's my question. So if we go forward with the vote tonight?
So the question is, if there's, tonight's vote is just for them to negotiate?
Right, for negotiation.
The question is, would that grant money or that issue of grant come up before there was a potential putback before town meeting on a purchase?
To apply.
Okay. Up to the mic.
The Mass Works Grant is, the application is due to the state mid-August. We will submit the application, how fast they turn it around, we don't know. This is gonna, this'll come back to the body, whether it's a fall town meeting or a spring town meeting. This is, really, can we just go look at something? It's, there's no money, there's, there's nothing. We have no answers, because we haven't gone to, to that extent yet. We've got Old Colony Planning working on it, we have Mass DOT working on it, we're gonna end up having some, the state involved, they are gonna decide what's the safest route, not us, not this body. They're gonna say, intersection goes here, a light goes here. They're the experts. We want to ask the experts and then present a plan.
Thank you, Ms. Fury. Mr. Harlow, you're out of time.
Thank you.
Mr. Wilson?
Lindsey Wilson, 29 Tall Timbers Lane. Just a comment, even though it's premature, as we said, this is just to go down the road. You know, to Tom's earlier point about running things as a business, we can look at this as, what's our downside risk? If we were to buy this property, the town is in the best position to add value to that property. So if things don't work out, we have site control, we decide not to move forward with the intersection, we have the power to give potential variances or other things, incentives to attract a business. So then we have an asset that was certainly worth less without whatever value add the planning board or the ZBA could add, and now we have something that we can actually make money on and not just spend money.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Eric Crone, 43 Longwood Circle. I'd like to move the question.
Okay, did you get, did you get that? Mr. Gallagher?
No.
Did you know who?
No.
I'm sorry. Yeah, Mr. Crone moved it. Mr. Crone moved the question. I have a second on that. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? All those opposed?
No.
Moving the motion now on Article 4. All those in favor of the motion on Article 4, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
I'm going to count it. It's a two-third requirement, ladies and gentlemen, so, huh? Oh, wait a minute, that altered. It's not, okay. Never change the vote on that. So that's a majority, and that passed. Ladies and gentlemen, that motion carries with a majority vote on voice count. Who am I hearing it from?
Who is it?
It's Coleman. I never want to say anymore until I know for sure who. Gene Coleman, and I have a second on that motion to reconsider. All those, again, ladies and gentlemen, if you want to debate it further, you're going to vote yes. If you don't want to debate it, you're going to vote no. So all those in favor of the motion to reconsider, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion does not carry. Moving on to Article 5. Mr. Bouchard.
Move that the town amend the town of Kingston zoning bylaws and general bylaws to regulate marijuana establishments as printed in the warrant.
Do I hear, I hear a second over here on that. Ladies and gentlemen, we have Board of Selectmen favorable action 500. Planning Board?
300.
Planning Board was favorable 300, and Finance Committee has no recommendation. That being seconded, Mr. Bouchard?
We have people here to answer questions, Rob Downey, certainly Jason Silva. But just as a matter of history, to show you where we're at and what this article represents, in the statewide election, Kingston residents voted against the legalization of marijuana by a narrow margin, basically 50-50. So in the years following that, the state had not come up with their regulations and laws and what have you. So we put a temporary moratorium on at least one year, maybe two, I'm not sure exactly. And then this past year, this past town meeting, there was an article to ban it based on those votes. So we tried to mirror the vote, prior vote. So the article to ban it failed. So the town of Kingston voted to legalize it here in Kingston and have it here, and allow it to be sold here, allow it to be a business here. So tonight, here we are with an article that basically tells us, tells people where it can be. So don't think that this vote tonight keeps marijuana out of your town. We've already voted that it's allowed. So tonight, if we, if we vote against this article, it'll be allowed anywhere. So what we've tried to do is somewhat be reasonable, okay? We're going to allow it to be sold in commercial districts only. And then the more details Rob could share with you about testing facilities and all those things, if you mind if he comes up?
No, but you do yours first, and then we'll get on to Mr. ...
Okay. And so I'm just letting you know, we're trying to be restrictive because we can always allow it in more places later. If we allow it in too many places now, then it's very hard to go backwards. You can't tell people to go out of business. So we think to be restrictive in the beginning, it's the way to be. It kind of reflects the vote, it's kind of a 50-50 thing in this town. So we're starting out, the planning board has decided to be restrictive with it, and this is where, what this article represents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bouchard. Mr. Downey, do you mind? I know you were one of the drafters on the article, so if you can explain how the article works and what's its total intent.
So a brief summary of this article. I'll start off with the zones that it's allowed for the five districts, the five different uses. Marijuana retail is allowed in the commercial zone. Marijuana testing facilities will be allowed in the commercial, industrial, in the commercial, industrial park district. Marijuana cultivation, craft marijuana cultivation, and marijuana product manufacturing will be allowed in industrial, in the commercial, industrial park districts. Marijuana retailers will not be allowed within 1,000 feet of any public or private school, licensed daycare, or any other area that youth commonly congregate, for example, a library or playground. All other marijuana establishments must maintain a 500-foot distance from those areas. All signage shall conform to Kingston zoning bylaws. Exterior signage may identify the establishment, but shall not contain any other advertisement. The special permit grants and authority, in this case, the planning board, may impose additional restrictions on signage as appropriate. No product shall be displayed in the windows or visible from any street or parking lot, and no marijuana establishment shall create a nuisance to a butters or to the surrounding area, or create any hazard, including but not limited to fire, explosion, fumes, gas, smoke, odors, obnoxious dust, vapors, offensive noise, or vibration, flashes, glare, objectional effluent, or electrical interference. All applicants will have to follow the special permit guidelines that our town currently has in place, as well as any requirements from the CCC. Additionally, applicants must submit a security plan to the Kingston Police Department only, which would include all security measures for the site, for transportation of marijuana products to and from off-site premises. The security plan shall include a site plan showing all exterior proposed security measures for the premises, including light in, fencing, gates, and alarms. Additionally, the total number of marijuana retail establishments that will be allowed will be limited to 20% of the number of retail liquor establishments. And if you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Thank you, Mr. Downey. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to make it really clear, we're not debating the pros and cons of marijuana. We did that at the last town meeting, okay? We are a marijuana town. That's the way it is. It was voted. So as a result, what we're doing is determining where and what bylaw should be in place, if any, to restrict where establishments can be. So with everybody understanding that, let's go on to debate, Mr. Harlow.
I have a motion, but should I give an opinion first, or just give it a motion?
You have it in writing?
Yes, a motion.
Yeah, read it and then come down.
Okay, so my motion to, to make a motion to amend Article 5 of the June 26, 2018 special town meeting as follows, 4.21-4, or, sorry, 4.21.4 location P. The zoning district in which marijuana retailers may be located is in any district where business is allowed.
Okay, if you can bring that down. Thank you, Paul. Yeah, indeed.
421.4 AP.
But that's, oh, P, okay.
Any, to any district where business is allowed.
And business, business.
I'm just, ladies and gentlemen, this one we have to determine, again, these are going to be, because I've had other amendments already proposed prior to the meeting that I've had to rule out of order. And again, this comes into whether or not, one of the things that happens as a moderator, when an article is presented and published out to all the citizens in the town, the article gives people awareness of what can go on at town meetings, so come if you're interested, because that's what could happen. So what I have to look at now is this increasing a usage, which I had requests for residential to be added, and I ruled those out as those were increasing usage and thereby not within the confines of the article, the four corners, as we call it, for notice to citizens. So I'm just working now with this one because I'm just figuring this out. So if I need just a minute to work on that, so hold tight, Mr. Harlow. That's what I'm thinking. We had this before. Town planning or building inspector, do you have the zoning bylaws? Thank you. You don't have the zoning bylaws?
Yes.
Oh. Thank you so much. All right. Right, but they can move that, yeah. Okay. Right, that's what I'm, I'm just, I'm working with that now. All right, Mr. Harlow, in regard to the motion that you've just made, the issue that we have is that you have with any district where business is allowed. And the problem is that that includes residential for home occupations, for own businesses. So I can't allow this, my article, to go forward with that amendment, because it would be included in residential, and that's what we just looked under the residential, because business is not a district in the town of Kingston, there isn't like a business district. So with that, I'm going to have to say you're, I can't go forward with your motion to amend, I'm going to rule it out of order, okay? Because I can't go forward. But what you can do, and this is what I've told other people who have approached me on this, is that you may present another article, just like Mr. Bouchard said before, you can present another article that allows for more leniency, more uses, at a later town meeting, either at the fall or the annual town meeting next spring. And that would allow you to draft an article that specifically provided for this use, to be used, whether it's in business, you could then confine it to exactly within the terms of the bylaws. Okay? So that's what you're going to have to end up doing.
Okay, one question. How is it more expansive if we're defining where it is?
You're not, it's not more, it's more expansive because what you're doing is expanding where the use can occur. And where the use can occur is, right now, under the kind of article, it's commercial and industrial, commercial, commercial, industrial, whatever the other one is. So with that in mind, you're now moving this, because there are businesses that can occur in residential zone.
Okay.
You know what I mean? So that's the issue. So one, next time, and I'll be more than happy to assist anybody with an article in regard, not just because of this, I mean, in any article drafting, so.
Well, I oppose this article, period. I believe that freedom is when, is best when it's in the hands of the many, as opposed to the hands of the few. If only a couple people have an opportunity to obtain a license, then down the road, they definitely don't want it to be expanded. And I believe competition is great, not only for the consumer, but for business owners as well, for it forces the best out of everyone. In addition, I've seen in the past with liquor stores trying to obtain liquor licensing, and they were put through a hard time because other liquor stores that were already currently in existence were in opposition for no other reason than they didn't want competition. And I thought that was despicable to see here in the United States of America and here in Kingston, Massachusetts. So I oppose this article vehemently. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Randall?
Bradford Randall, 39 Winter Street. Sorry about that. So I'm under the understanding that we're going to have another town meeting in the fall, in four months.
Hasn't been set, but it's anticipated.
And, you know, I'm also under the understanding, having spoken to people on the planning board, certainly people in my family have, that there's not going to be any marijuana establishments in town for at least a year. So we do have some time. And we're here because at the last town meeting, the bylaw failed. The residents asked for more economic opportunity. When these bylaws were drafted up, they weren't drafted by Kingston, they were drafted by Newberry. We were at the planning board hearing last night, and they're in a tough spot. You know, they expected the bylaw to pass at the last town meeting, and so now they have to come up with something. But there is a lack of understanding of the regulations that the Cannabis Control Commission has on marijuana. And so we did provide an amendment to try to allow it in residential because our farmers and our growers and our residents deserve the chance to benefit from this new industry. More often, farmers are selling their land here in Kingston because they can't turn a profit, and developers are coming in and open space is going away. So I'm going to ask that the voters here turned down this bylaw on the hope that we can develop something that works for Kingston, includes our residents, and regulates it so that we're not just consumers in this new industry, that we can actually benefit. And there's a lot of people here that could stand to benefit. So I'd ask you to keep them in mind.
Thank you, Mr. Randall. I do want everybody to know, because I don't know if it came up when Mr. Bouchard was addressing the floor, the Kingston, when we voted, it was last year or two years ago, we voted a moratorium in place until the state could get their regulations and everything in order for us to then decide what we wanted to do, and once they did that, the planning board did that. Our moratorium ends on June 30th. So just so everybody knows, the moratorium of any marijuana establishment in Kingston ends on June 30th, and so Kingston would have no bylaw. I'm not advocating one way or the other, I'm just saying for everybody to understand what's going on. Mr. Harlow?
Daniel Harlow, 31 Howland's Lane. I'd like to make a motion to amend the article as written.
Okay, and do you have it written?
I have it on chicken scratch, kind of, right now.
Read it.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to amend Article 5 of the June 26, 2018 special town meeting zoning bylaw, Article 7 marijuana, 6-7-1, retail establishments. Limit the total number of marijuana retail establishments to 100% of the number of retail liquor establishments.
Limit to 100% of retail establishments, as opposed to the 20% that's coming to propose.
Correct.
One second, I just need to look. Do you have yours? Yeah.
Is there a cap in the state marijuana statute? Am I misguided? Is low as is high? Okay, so once again, though, that would be setting a parameter, if it was 100 and we wanted to make it 20, then that would be lesser included, if only from 20 to 100. But I think it's kind of, it's kind of an offer in another way, too, right? Hmm? Yeah. Right. Okay.
Mr. Harlow, can you bring your motion down, please? Do you mind just wrapping it? Oh, you're coming up. Thank you. So sign and change. Okay, I'm going to take it, because we're, thank you. At least what I read. All right, back on, ladies and gentlemen. Just ask Jay on that one, too. Okay, all right. So ladies and gentlemen, Board of Selectmen has confirmed that there are seven liquor establishments in Ki, eight, eight? Eight liquor establishments in Kingston. So I'm going to allow the motion to stand on the floor in regard to the fact that it is allowed within the permissible parameters. So the motion now, ladies and gentlemen, is, right now, the bylaw says 20% of the number of liquor establishment, retail liquor establishments in Kingston, which is eight. So obviously 20%. What am I doing, my Quick Mac? 1.6? So now going to 100%, there's a chance for eight marijuana facilities or whatever, retail facilities. So do I have a second on Mr. Harlow's motion to amend?
Second.
Here in a second on that. Mr. Harlow, would you like to address your motion to amend?
Plain and simple. Again, I believe in equal opportunity, equal treatment under the law. I think the best way to, again, if we're going to allow for the advancement of this economic opportunity, whether you like it or not, people need to be allowed to have that opportunity. And by limiting and controlling the amount by comparison to liquor establishments, I just don't think is a fair and equal practice under the laws or the Constitution of the United States.
Thank you, Mr. Harlow. Now, ladies and gentlemen, whoever's at the microphone, we're not addressing the whole bylaw. At this point, I only want people to address the change from 20 to 100% of retail liquor establishments. So that's what we're debating right now on the floor. So is anybody stepping to the mic on that issue? Mr. Bonsek?
Peter Bonsek, 355 states. I got to agree with Mr. Harlow on this, because if you look at the 20%, we said we had eight. We have eight liquor stores in town right now?
Yes, yeah, that's what I said, 1.6, yeah.
Okay, so 1.6, so to me, the way it was written up, it's purposely to keep it at one shop in town. And as Mr. Harlow says, the opportunities should be allowed. I also agree the fact that it shouldn't be based on liquor stores. So I'm in agreement with Mr. Harlow, and I say vote for the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Bonsek. Anyone else, yes, sir?
Dennis Randall, 39...
Dennis Randall, 39 Winter Street. I also support the amendment because it affords Kingston the opportunity to maximize tax revenue from the, to the town, from the sale of cannabis products. That could be a significant benefit to our budget, and we are at the center of tourist trade. I'd like to see Kingston position itself to be smartly beneficial of this economy.
Thank you, Mr. Randall. Anyone else on the issue of percentages? Yep?
Dave Gavigan, 13 Pembroke Street. I'm on the planning board. We didn't really like the 20% language either, but we were leaning more toward maybe two retail locations, maybe three, but more two, more like two. But going right to eight without seeing the impact of what it's gonna have on town, you know, we could always come back and increase it next year if everything works out fine, but if we just bump it right to eight, it's gonna be at eight. So that's my thoughts on it.
Thank you, Mr. Gavigan. Anybody further, yes?
Janet Stanford, 53 Evergreen Street. I'm against this amendment. People should remember that almost half of this town is, was even against having a marijuana store in the town to begin with. And I think increasing it to an unlimited number is really, it's unfair to the people that don't even want it in the first place, and I agree that the 20% is an appropriate thing to at least start with.
Thank you, Ms. Stanford. Anyone else? Yep?
Lorraine Bergio, 42 Inthrop Street. I just wanted to know what the rationale was in tying it to a retail liquor establishment.
Why in drafting the article, Mr. um?
What is the rationale in assigning the number? Where did they come up with that?
Hold one second, and Town Council will address that.
That, that rationale is born out of the regulations and the statutes created by the Cannabis Control Commission. They offered that as a possibility of controlling the number to the towns, to have it referenced as a, as a ratio to your retail liquor establishments. You'd have to ask them, I think they're thinking somewhat similar uses, but that's what they decided to index it again against, and that's what they're allowing towns to index it against. So that's a tool that the state gives the towns.
So it's a state suggestion or a mandate?
It's not a mandate. A town does not have to utilize it. It says the town can limit the number to as low as 20% of the retail liquor establishment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody further on the, on the issue of percentage? Okay. Step forward then, too, sir.
Eric Crone, 43 Longwood Circle. This is still in its infancy. We don't know what's gonna happen when we start opening up shops. You know, there could be a lot more demand on the police, we really don't know. So again, you know, it's illegal federally, so there's banking issues, there's cash businesses. So having eight businesses, I think it's gonna tax our police department a little bit more than one or two. So I would change the amendment, or I'd make a secondary amendment, that we don't tie it to the number of liquor stores and just cap it at three.
All right, well, we have one motion on, you can either support the motion or not, you can make a separate motion to amend after that. This is the motion to amend.
So after we vote, can I, can I change that motion?
I don't think so.
You have to index it against.
Yeah. Town Council's saying, too, that we really should be, as a town, indexing it to something, and that might have to do with prejudice or anything else, cause otherwise you're...
If the number of liquor establishments decreases or increases, then three could not be the correct number. You have to index it against a percentage. If you're gonna limit the number, you have to index it against the number of liquor establishments.
We have to index it?
You do, if you're gonna limit the number, because if your number of liquor establishments went up so that this was less than 20%, then this wouldn't be allowed. So you have to do that. If you wanted to increase the percentage, you could.
So I would say 35%.
Okay, one second, I'm just, Town Council's giving you that, you can amend. So your motion to amend is what?
Thirty, thirty-five percent.
His motion only, motion to amend this motion?
Yes.
Okay. So right now, his is to 100% of the liquor retailers. Retail liquor establishments.
Yeah, so.
One thing at a time, go ahead.
Thirty-five percent, that's what, that's my motion.
So you wanna amend his 100 to 35% of the?
Liquor establishments.
The liquor establishments, that's right. And again, this is because of, we don't know what sort of hit this is gonna be in the police department.
I'm sorry, Mr. Crone, one second, I was dealing with something with Town Council. What did you say?
My rationale for this is, we don't know what kind of...
I need a second first. Um, do I have a second on his motion to amend, the first motion to amend? Um, I have a second. Okay, Mr. Crone, address your motion.
So again, my rationale is, this is all new, that nobody else in the state has done this yet, so we don't know what kind of burden this is gonna place on our police department, increasing our costs, are we gonna need additional cruisers? I don't think having eight separate establishments is necessarily a good idea. Change it later, but I would say no more than three to start off with. The 35%.
Okay. Anybody on his motion to amend on the 35%? Yes, Mr. Randall?
Um, I would urge the defeat of that, because it's kind of disingenuous that a town that wants to promote business and to grow its business economy also doesn't want stores in because they might cost some resources. The store, cannabis retail outlet will generate a tremendous amount of income to the town through taxes. And if there are any fees associated with it, because we find it's more expensive than we anticipated, we can level those fees.
Thank you, Mr. Randall. I have Mr. Bonsec and then Ms. Fiore. Mr. Bonsec.
Peter Bonsec, 335 Estates. I just heard you say up there that, I heard the Town Council say that it's 20% if it goes, if we get more liquor stores, that means we could have more shops, correct?
The percentage is based on the index of the number of retail liquor stores, so yes, you increase retail liquor stores, then this percentage is the same of the number of increases.
All right. What if four of them go out of business? What if we go down to three liquor stores in town? I'm doing it as a what-if. What, how does that affect the shops that are already in business, or does it now say, hey, you can't be, you cannot be in business because four liquor stores have left the town? And that would be a lot less than 20%, or 35%.
Yeah, we understand your question. So in other words, if at the time that a retail marijuana retail store goes into effect, and there are eight establishments, and we license however many percentages allowed, then four businesses, liquor stores, go out of business, does the town, can the town close an existing retail marijuana?
First of all, it's incredibly unlikely that the town would have a vacant license, but if, there's grandfathering under zoning, Peter.
Okay. So once granted to a marijuana facility, they would be in?
Okay, well, I'm against the amendment for the 35% because saying it and having it on paper that it would be grandfathered in, I don't see that on there yet, it hasn't happened, so let's go with the 100%. There's only eight liquor stores. I doubt if you're gonna see eight pot shops pop up in a matter of months. So let's give the opportunity of what we have here, yes, it's new, I don't see how it's gonna affect the police department, because we, they're gonna be like a regular retail store. You go in there, you pick what you want, you pay for it, and you go home. So let's get to the 100%, let's move on with it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bonsec, Ms. Fiore, and then Mr. Bouchard. And then, ladies and gentlemen, we can wrap up and stop voting some of these amendments to at least get to the main, where we're at. Ms. Fiore.
The planning board...
Shh. Again, we can't hear while you were talking. Go ahead.
The planning board put together a bylaw for 20%. That is what they're recommending going forward with, for the very first marijuana bylaw in the town of Kingston. We have plenty of time in the next few months, another year, to increase it if chosen. I would recommend defeating both amendments, stick with the 20%. The planning board has vetted, legal council has vetted, in the best interest of Kingston, as Mr. Bouchard said, once you go larger, you can't go smaller. We start small, and then we can go larger if we, if we feel fit at another meeting.
Mr. Bouchard. Come on. Mr. Bouchard.
Talking to a gentleman that has been in liquor sales for many, many years, I asked him about why there's this cap on number of liquor stores based on population and what have you. And he says, well, you think about the investment that is to open a liquor store, if you have too many and they're not doing good business, they become desperate, and they do desperate things. Only makes sense. So that's based on population and how many people use liquor. We don't know what the numbers are, how many people are gonna be using the cannabis products. So why do we wanna just go and say, we're gonna open eight stores, when we don't even know what the demand is yet? Do we want eight store owners out there desperate to do business? What happens when people are desperate, they do desperate things? I say we start small, we can always increase it, and move on from there. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm now gonna call a vote on the first, which is the latest motion to amend. This is whether or not you want to amend the original motion to amend. So do you wanna make it 35% of retail liquor store establishments? So that's what you're voting right now. Do you wanna change the original amendment, which you're not voting on yet, 100, but do you want that to be 35% as opposed to 100%? That's what you're voting. So a yes vote makes it 35% on the motion to amend. Everybody got it? Everybody understand what they're voting on? All right, so all those in favor of the motion to amend for 35% say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay. So the motion to amend to 35% fails. And again, that was, those are majority votes, just so everybody knows what the standing is. Now, we're going back to the motion to amend to 100%, which is now back on the floor, okay? So what I'd like to do is also move that now, because I think we've debated this whole 100%, 20%, we all understand, the motion to amend will be to allow 100% of the number of retail liquor stores, liquor establishments, all right? So a yes vote's gonna say, yes, we can have up to eight, as, cause that's our current number, up to eight establishment, a no vote brings us back to the 20%, okay? Everybody understand what they're voting? Yes, 100%? No, back to 20. Got it? All right. All those in favor of the motion to amend to 100% say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay, yelling doesn't help, but okay. Okay, so the motion to amend to 100% does not carry. All right, so we're back on the original debate, and if we can, ladies and gentlemen, this is bylaws to put in place, so let's get right to the issues and let's run them up at this point. So, just gotta figure out where I was at. Okay, ma'am.
Janet Stanford, 53 Evergreen Street. I hate to do this, but I wanna make an amendment.
Yeah.
Okay, what? Yeah?
I wanna change the retail store location to be only commercial industrial instead of commercial.
Okay, do you have your site in the stat, in the bylaw?
I think it would be 4.21.1. I'm not sure.
4.21, 4P. 4.21, 4P.
I don't have my glasses on.
And you're saying marijuana retailers?
Um...
Just what you, forget it, I got, we've got it, we know where it is. So what are you asking? You're asking for a motion to amend to change the marijuana retailers?
Right, from commercial...
From commercial to commercial industrial.
Can I say why, or do I have to just...
No, not yet.
Second.
Second.
Ladies and gentlemen, it would be to alter 4.21.4 subsection P. No, not yet, I haven't done that yet, so I'm just saying, now, she's going greater inclusive, so that's permissible. Okay. So your motion is allowed in because it's going greater, so that's fine. I need you to put it in writing before we can move on it, so you need to come down and write that up. Do you, okay. You have a piece of paper? Okay. Move to amend section 4.21.4. 4.21.4, small, a paragraph's P, little P. To change, from commercial district to commercial industrial district. No.
Yes, it is.
It says it right here.
Park District.
It does?
No.
Yeah, I just said that.
It's a state name, I can't access it.
Well, the other ones are not.
Yes.
Oh. Park District, yeah, 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 okay. Well, yeah. Well, our own bylaw is one of them. I'm just trying to keep it consistent with the one above it. That's why it says commercial industrial district, so, yeah. Did you sign and date it? Okay. Great. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, the motion to amend is allowed. So I need a second on that. That being seconded, Ms. Stanford, if you can address why you're moving that.
Okay, so the commercial district would include, like Stop and Shop Plaza, Big Y Plaza, Dollar Tree Plaza. I don't think that's right, because although there's no school or library, daycare center, I just don't think it's right. I mean, I bring my kids to those places, and again, I just, I didn't want a store in Kingston to begin with. I don't want my kids seeing the store, I don't want...
One second, I'm so sorry. Shh. Go, I'm sorry, Ms. Stanford, thank you, go ahead.
It's okay. I don't want them asking about, you know, what kind of store that is, I just, I don't think it belongs in Kingston at all. You know, there's no reason that people can't just go up to the industrial area and just go to the store there. I mean, Plymouth has it in the industrial park, they have their medical marijuana facility there. I don't see what the big deal is, and again, half of the town doesn't even want this here. So I would like people to vote in favor of my amendment.
Thank you, Ms. Stanford. Now, ladies and gentlemen, again, like the last time, we're just addressing this motion to amend in regard to whether or not you do or don't support it being changed from commercial to commercial industrial park district. Anyone wanna speak on that? Yes, Mr. Hallow. All right, if everybody can knock, and let the people up that need to sit, so if you're not gonna speak to this particular portion of this amendment, sit down. You can get up again in a minute. Uh, Mr. Hallow?
I oppose this amendment because of the fact that it promotes crony capitalism, and big business will love this, and again, freedom is best when it's in the hands of the many. Competition is great for both the consumer and the businessperson, and this, again, will promote crony capitalism, leads to corruption, every other, every other ideal involving that. So again, I oppose this. Everybody, again, my personal opinion, you're not physically kicking someone or stealing their money, live your life, and let them live their life. Just like, again, I oppose, well, I don't oppose it, but I think people are wasting their lives on Facebook. But again, that's your decision, waste your life on Facebook, that's just my opinion.
All right, let's stay to the facts.
Okay, so if someone wants to go and purchase marijuana at a local commercial retailer, let them do that, because they might oppose you being on Facebook, but they shouldn't go and have the right to say that you can't be on Facebook wasting your brain on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hallow. Anyone else on this issue of location? Yes, step to the microphone.
Michelle Vitaglione, 11 Copper Beach Drive in Kingston. Although I am not in favor of marijuana sales in the town, the point is to have this be in an industrial commercial area, to me, promotes riffraff and, and just things going on in a secluded area. I would much rather see these establishments be out in the open... I worked in liquor stores for 10 to 15 years of my life, and it's this, they're similar products. I mean, they're just, they just are. That's my view on them, that's how I feel that they are, but I don't think putting these in an industrial commercial area is beneficial to anybody. And I do agree with, you know, if the town voted for us to have these, then they need to be out in the open. And then I do have a question for Madam Moderator. You did refer to moratorium. So, does that mean that on June 30th, that if we don't take this vote, that we will be bound by the state's bylaws? What exactly does that mean? I just need clarity.
It just means our moratorium says right now that there can be no retail.
At all?
As of when the moratorium ends, whoever wants to do retail still has to follow the state procedure, so that's a lengthy licensing process. Some of those license applications, many of those license applications are in process out there in, throughout the state. So, all that means is that those would be processed, and if we didn't pass any kind of bylaw, then they could go wherever retail was allowed, anywhere in the town, for the retail side. The industrial side, the growing, the testing, would go wherever that's allowed.
Got it. So, to me, we definitely need to absolutely vote on this. To let that pass on June 30th is not the right way to go, because we should be promoting economic development in the town. And if we already voted for it to be here, then that's, that's just what I think.
Thank you, Ms. Vitaleano. Sir?
Damian Baird, 109 Summer Street. I would like to point out that in the bylaw, as I have been reading it, marijuana retailers are not currently allowed to, or will not be allowed to advertise in really mostly any meaningful way on their storefronts. So, I find it a little ridiculous that you would want to move them to another area solely for the reason of visibility, because you don't want to see it. I urge everyone to vote no on this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baird. Are you up, Mr. Bouchard, then? Are you up?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Bill Marbido, 303 Elm Street. I move the amendment.
Move the amendment. All right, I had Mr. Bouchard, I had cue you, you find, okay. So, he moves the amendment, but what we're doing is, I'm just gonna, all those in favor of moving the question, meaning the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. So, now, ladies and gentlemen, we're now voting the motion to amend to change retail, marijuana retail stores are, read it, exactly, what does it say? Retail to commercial industrial as opposed to what it currently says, which is commercial. So, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion does not carry. All right, back on to the original now. Back on the original. Yes, Mr. Randall.
Back on board.
Huh? Yeah. Sorry. Rob, if you don't mind stepping back, so he can, might as well take your papers, so they don't get confused.
Mindful of the time constraint. Dennis Randall, 39 Winters Street, Kingston, Mass. Since the birth of our nation, Kingston has been a community of farmers, merchants, and manufacturers. We built ships for the defeat of a tyrant king, our iron foundries manufactured cannonballs for the Continental Army, and we harvested ice from Silver Lake for sale around the world. Article 5, as presented by the planning board, turns a blind eye to our entrepreneurial spirit and history. Farmers, families, and homeowners are prohibited from any of the financial benefits from an estimated $1.4 billion a year cannabis economy brought to us by the legalization of recreational marijuana in the Commonwealth. We are a right-to-form farm community, but even an upstanding farmer in Kingston able to meet the stringent cultivation requirements of the Cannabis Control Commission is prohibited from earning a lawful income from the safe, secure growing of marijuana on their property. This is, there is no rational reason why a homeowner or farmer with the expertise and wherewithal to safely and securely operate an in-home microbusiness as defined by the Massachusetts Cannabis Commission should be prevented from earning wealth from the safety, lawful, and secure cultivation, manufacture of cannabis products if they can prove that they can do so without impact or detriment to their neighbors or abutters. As per the ruling of our moderator, I am unable to offer an amendment to remedy the situation since such an amendment would be beyond the scope of our current bylaw. I therefore urge this assembly to send this article back, with love, to the planning board for revision, to allow a less exclusive approach to this new economy and to allow Kingston residents to benefit.
Mr. Randall, five-second warning. Five seconds? You're, I mean, you're, okay, great. Yeah. Thank you. Sir?
Bill Marbido, 303 Elm Street. I move the question.
Madam Moderator, the last 30, 40 minutes, we were talking about amendments, okay? We have not had enough time, other people that have been up here waiting have not had time to discuss the whole bylaw. So, I feel it's unfair if we allow this motion to move.
Thank you, Mr. Bonsek. I overrule you. Motion, because it has been debated, I understand. I think everybody knows what they want to do. Do we want a bylaw that either is the way it's set forth, or do we want no bylaw? That's really where we're at. And I think there has been enough, there was, before the motion to amend, there was, I had eight people spoke, so, and then in the motion to amend, people have given even more views. So, moving the question, all those in favor to move the question, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion carries with minimal opposition. Now, going back to the original motion, because, just want to confirm, none of the amendments carried. So, back to the original motion, which is going to require a two-third vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion carries with minimal opposition. Now, going back to the original motion, because, just want to confirm, none of the amendments carried. So, back to the original motion, which is going to require a two-third vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Ladies and gentlemen, the motion carries.
Motion carries.
One second, can I finish even what I'm saying? Hold on. Motion carries with a majority vote on a voice count. I mean, a two-third vote on a voice count. I have to say these things, or it doesn't work. So, let me just finish my notes, okay? Motion carries with two-third vote on a voice count. Yes, I now have Mr. Bonsek.
Madam, I'd like to request a hand vote, please.
I need seven people to stand. I don't need people to second it, I need seven citizens to stand to support a voice count. How about green card, so I know who's up and who's not? Two, four, six, eight, 10. All right, I got it. So, let's do a voice, let's do a count. Ladies and gentlemen, under the rules, any person can move for a voice, move for a counted vote, as long as seven citizens stand, and we had 10. Certainly. You're voting the exact same thing you just voted, so it's Article 5. A yes vote means you're in favor of the bylaw going into effect, a no vote means there will be no bylaw. All right? So, yes, bylaw, no, no bylaw. All right? So, all those in favor, I don't have a card to hold up right there, can I hold you, hold your green card in the air, and that's a yes vote. This is, no, it's not. Mr. Bazler?
72.
Mr. Bazler is 72. Mr. Pepe? Mr. Pepe is 61. Mr. Armstrong?
5.
55. Mr. Armstrong is 55. All those in opposition? Please hold your green card in the air. Opposition, that's a no vote. I'm sorry, no vote.
Are you voting?
No.
5.
Mr. Bazler's 5. Mr. Pepe?
5.
Mr. Pepe's 5. Mr. Armstrong? Mr. Armstrong is 10. 20. Ladies and gentlemen, the article passes with two-thirds vote, with 188 in favor and 20 in opposition.
Motion to reconsider.
I have a motion to reconsider by Ms. Coleman. I have a second by Ms. Fury. Ladies and gentlemen, again, just so everybody votes, understands it, if you vote to reconsider, that is to reopen debate and talk about it further. Is a yes vote, a no vote is, it's done, okay? No more debate. All those in favor of reconsideration, say aye. All those opposed?
No.
Motion does not carry unanimously. Moving on to Article 6. Let's keep it a little bit down. If you're leaving, which I think is sad, then just do it quietly. Go ahead.
Move that the town amend Chapter 4, Town Officers' Boards and Committees, Article 20, Revolving Funds, Section 4-20-2. Expenditure limitations by striking the words, "The fund shall not be used to pay compensation of any full-time or benefit-eligible employees," and inserting in place thereof the words, "Fringe benefits of full-time employees whose salaries are paid from the fund shall also be paid from the fund," consistent with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a Half.
Having a second on that, ladies and gentlemen, Board of Selectmen is favorable with a 500. Finance Committee is unfavorable with a 040. Ms. Wood, 040. What was the vote? The clerk has 050, I have 040.
We revoted it at our last meeting, and there was four numbers there.
So, 040?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Woodworth, please address your motion.
Thank you. At the last annual town meeting, this article was voted and amended on the floor to remove the opportunity to pay full-time employees out of the current revolving funds. One of the reasons revolving funds was created, especially for recreation departments, was to help support some of those particular things. So, therefore, we wouldn't come to the town body and request funds out of the operating budget. So, therefore, with the way that it currently states, in the 53 E and a Half general bylaw already stated that fringe benefits needed to be included, and we've removed that from the last particular vote. So, I'm asked to put that back in for two reasons. One is, any union employee currently will not be allowed to be paid any overtime. So, for the recreation department, we have a lot of programs that run in the evening or on weekends, things of that nature. Our Recreation Office Program Administrator is now a union employee, and therefore, we would not either be able to hold sometimes our evening programs or even weekend activities. I have no mechanism to pay them, because we have no overtime in our budget. This would allow for that to be paid, and those overtime salaries don't also incur fringe benefits, so it's actually a moot point with regard to that. But the other opportunity that this creates is if the programs continue to grow and we were able to offer more programming, then we would have the opportunity to create a new position and possibly have that individual paid out of the Recreation Department revolving fund. Any new position would still be vetted by the regular circumstances that we normally do. We would have to put in a application into the wage and personnel for a new position. We would also then have to go to the Board of Selectmen to have them vet that position as well. So, the same process would still take place, the only difference being that we wouldn't be requesting those funds to come out of the operating budget, but they would be supported by all of the activities that happen within the Recreation Department through the revolving funds.
Ms. Woodworth, can you just answer a question? I know you mentioned that this was voted at the last town meeting. Don't you mean town meeting in 2014? Not the one we had a month ago?
Correct.
Okay. So, it was voted in 2014. And just for clarification, 2017?
Yes.
What did I say, 14? I know. It's been 2017. Just for clarification, again, just so people understand, are the employees paid from the operating fund that you get from all your fees, or are they not, and they're paid from town, from our income, town's income?
So, there's two answers to that. So, the Recreation Office Program Administrator is currently paid out of the town's operating budget as part of the operating budget for the Recreation Department. However, I have no mechanism now to pay that individual any overtime salary if they were required to work an evening event or a weekend event, because the bylaw states that no full-time employees can be paid out of the revolving fund, which is where we would not have paid them prior to this vote being taken place.
Does that make sense? Yes. Thank you. That was just for clarification, just so. Yes, Mr. Hollow?
Daniel Hollow, 31 Hovland's Lane. I know you're speaking specifically to the Recreation Department, but wouldn't passing this allow for any revolving funds, such as the Adams Center, the Building Department, Senior Center, et cetera, to hire and pay full-time employees without going through the normal channels of hiring people? It wouldn't just apply to the Recreation Department, if I'm hearing this correctly? And then, wouldn't it also mean that the monies can be spent by the respective director without town meeting approval? Again, I just kind of think that's slippery, to have that, too much autonomy going to certain, to more departments. But the wording in the warrant only references the Recreation Department, but wouldn't the article apply to all the departments? And then furthermore, recreational programs tend to be seasonal in nature, do they not? Shouldn't they need to hire anyone other than part-time seasonal instructors for those programs?
Sure, so I'll do the best I can.
One second, are you addressing that? Because that could, no, no, but what he's saying is actually true. In the article itself, it's just saying all revolving funds, in the description it's limiting, it said would allow the Rec Commission. So, the description is saying as if it's referring just to the Rec Commission, when in fact, it's saying all revolving funds.
That's correct.
So, can you, yeah?
Yeah, that's correct. And so, just to kind of repeat some of the things there, too, this applies, the change applies to full-time, that would actually be getting benefits. Second, most of the revolving funds are very small and couldn't accommodate full-time employees, unless, and annually, we vote on those limits, so there's only a few revolving funds that could even accommodate that. And third, I think it's already been stressed that this doesn't change any of the vetting of employees. It's just a, it's just a revenue stream for it, so the vetting stays the same.
Thank you. So, the, yes, it applies to beyond the Rec Department, the division can only, it's the application of where the funds are going to come from, but the vetting of actual hiring of people is still through the same process. Back to you, Mr. Hollow.
Okay. Again, I just think that it's very slippery. We all know this town has a very good habit of just voting yes on everything, so in the future, I'm sure other revolving funds are going to be potentially looking for expansions in their budgets to potentially get into the same thing. But that being said, I'm wondering why the Finance Committee was so unfavorable on this particular article.
Mr. Pike?
We were unfavorable pretty much for the items that you've just mentioned, Mr. Hollow. We were concerned that, number one, the hiring could be done in all of the revolving funds. We were also concerned if, in fact, the hiring of these people would be vented by our normal human re- by our normal human resource Board of Selectmen process. We are also concerned about the, uh, ability of people to hire without having enough oversight.
Thank you, Mr. Pike. Anything further, Mr. Hollen? You've got little...
That's it. Thank you.
Seconds. Okay. Uh, Ms. Fury, and then I'll go back to you. I'm sorry, Mr. Stevens was up first, then Ms. Fury. Sorry.
As worded, the amendment, uh, to the bylaws would allow any full-time employee to be paid out of a revolving fund. And that's any full-time employee from any department. There's nothing in there that restricts. If they wanted to pay me...
No.
They could pay me, even though there's a budget line for me. Okay? There is nothing in there, and I've talked with the town accountant about this. There's really no prohibition that would allow the town to control what benefit-eligible employee was paid and what benefit-eligible employee was not paid.
Thank you. Um, Attorney Talaman, if you can address that?
That's, that's, that's not true. The, we vote a purpose. It is not true, Ken. So, we vote a purpose for each revolving fund and what it can be used for and what it can be spent for? So you cannot go beyond that purpose. That's enshrined in your bylaws when we approve the type of revolving fund. So you cannot pay someone who's not producing for that particular service. So it would have to be germane to the services listed in the, uh, recreation revolving fund. So that is, that, those are the full-time employees that are servicing that purpose, not incidental, that service.
Uh, Mr. Stevens? Were you trying to say that if you did a job at the, um, that, I think...
Precisely. If the recreation commission wanted me to come to one of their events and talk about town debt, and I agreed to do that, they could pay me for doing that. And that would add to the OPEB liability.
I think what he's saying is that if he became and, and was brought to do a rec event, he would then be paid as a full-time employee the additional sums from their revolving fund.
I, I don't believe that's true.
Okay. Um, I think I was back to Ms. Fury, and then I'll go over.
The Board of Selectmen favor this, this article for a couple of reasons. As Attorney Talaman said, each town meeting, we set a limit on how much can be utilized within a revolving fund. Typically, the money amount is about fifty thousand dollars. Revolving funds are used for programs and different activities within recreation, the Council on Aging, the Adams Center. Their users pay, and then the instructors or the program people, they're paid as well. As far as what Sue is saying, this is to pay overtime. For, if you have a limit on a revolving fund of fifty thousand dollars, you're not going to get full-time people for fifty thousand dollars because that revolving fund is used for many other things than salary or overtime. It's used to pay for instructors, for different, um, materials needed to run the programs. So it is actually very limited on the amount of funds that would be available to pay for a full-time employee.
Thank you, Ms. Fury. Uh, Mid, Ms. Woodworth?
Um, again, just for clarification for the two things is that, one of the things that Rowar was asked to do as department heads is to be fiscally responsible. This does provide an opportunity for us to be fiscally responsible. So again, what revolving funds are is the money comes in from a program or an activity, and then the money goes back out to support that, whether it's through instructors or employees and things of that nature. So it limits the opportunity, or limits the need, I guess, for us to potentially come back to town meeting and say, "We need to hire another staff person, and we need to have that money come out of the operating budget." This provides an opportunity for us to be somewhat self-funded, again, which is what this town body is always asking us to do, to be creative with our resources. And this is a mechanism that allows us to do that. So again, if our programs were to grow and we wanted to create a new position, we would still have to go through the normal vetting process with the Wage and Personnel Board, through the Board of Selectmen, and open the hiring freeze, do all of the exact same things. It doesn't give me or any other director or department head the opportunity to just hire somebody without that vetting process. What it does is it helps us continue to grow and increase what we want to offer to our community without going through the operating budget and through the tax dollars. It's an opportunity to have those resources that come in, support that, that particular program or event through an employee, whether it's a full-time employee, currently, part-time employees are paid out of that as well. This just provides the opportunity for that full-time employee. Again, whether it's a new employee or existing employees who are union employees. If we have a weekend event, again, I have no mechanism to pay that particular individual. They don't normally work on weekends. So it just provides that mechanism to pay those individuals for those particular services.
Thank you, Ms. Woodworth. Um, Ms. McKinnon?
Thank you. I just want to clarify a couple of, um, couple of statements that, that have been made. Um, revolving funds definitely serve a purpose, and the purpose of a revolving fund is to, um, establish programs, charge fees for those programs, for the services that you provide, and then from the fees that you've charged to pay the instructors who are providing those services. Um, there, the revolving funds that we authorize at town meeting include revolving funds for the recreation department, the building department, the Adams Center, and the senior center. And the recreation revolving, uh, fund at our last town meeting was authorized at, if I remember correctly, three hundred and five thousand dollars. So it's a substantial revolving fund. I believe the building inspectors revolving fund was, uh, somewhere between a hundred and fifty thousand and a hundred and seventy-five thousand. So we're not talking about small funds. We're talking about, uh, the opportunity to run programs and, and to pay some instructors. As we heard, the nature of recreation programs is that they are part-time and they are seasonal, whether we offer things like, you know, a STEM program for Lego building, or ballet classes, or introduction to basketball. Those are things that are seasonal and temporary in nature, provided by instructors that are part-time instructors. And the existing revolving funds, uh, support exactly that. When we talk about full-time employees being paid out of the revolving funds, there's a couple of things that have not been discussed or considered here tonight. The first is the OPEB liability. We've heard years and years' worth of discussion about the other post-employment benefit liability that we have for the town of Kingston. This particular article, the change to this article only talks about the compensation and the existing fringe benefits. It does not provide any remedy for the other post-employment benefits. The town would then, because it's not included in here, the town, in our town budget, would be responsible for covering those costs. The other thing that we have not heard about is, if we're talking about paying full-time employees all of a sudden out of these revolving funds, what does that do to the fund balance? And what does that do to the program fees that we charge to folks? So for example, if we're running a program that is a ballet class and we're charging two hundred dollars per student to attend the class, and we pay the instructor a thousand dollars for running a six-week program. If we're now all of a sudden paying a full-time employee out of there, and we're no longer paying five thousand dollars, but we're paying a fifty thousand dollar employee, the funds that are available in that revolving fund will dry up much faster. So what happens when those funds are no longer available? And yet, we've become accustomed to that position. Does it then all of a sudden go over into the operating budget? What happens to the program fees? If we are reducing the available fund balance in our revolving funds that much more rapidly, we need to recover those costs somehow. So are we going to all of a sudden double or triple the fees for the programs that we are charging for people to take these services through the rec department? So there are still a lot of considerations, and there are a lot of serious impacts about charging full-time salaries to a revolving fund. I don't want anybody to go into this decision blindly. The finance committee has talked about a number of these issues. Um, some of them we don't support, and some of them just have not been answered. So we would ask you to not support this article this evening and have some additional time to work out some of these details. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McKinnon. Uh, Ms. Woodworth, if I can ask you a question, because I think I got confused, and, and I don't know if anybody else did. You're talking about, can you tell me the employee, not the name, just the person's position?
Sure. Uh, well, I'm talking about a couple of different things, but one of the positions is called the Recreation Office Program Administrator. That particular...
Administrator, that's the one I'm talking about. Okay.
Correct.
So, I have a question. You said that the administrator is paid from the operating fund. The salary is paid from the operating fund?
Correct. So, but...
Okay, one second. No, no, I just want to lay this out as it goes.
Yeah.
So what you're proposing, because you're saying you can't pay that person overtime because their salary's coming out of the operating fund, so you can't pay their overtime from the revolving fund?
No, that's not...
Then what are you saying about this person?
So this particular individual, the Recreation Office Program Administrator position used to be a wage and personnel position. With wage and personnel positions, you have the opportunity to change their hours, change their schedules, adjust as needed. Once that position now is...
No, no, I get it. They're a union employee, so you're stuck with it, the, the schedules.
I'm stuck with their schedule. Correct. So if we needed that particular person to work in the evening or a weekend event, then we need to pay that individual overtime. I have no mechanism to pay that overtime because there's no overtime in our current operating budget.
Okay, then one second.
So therefore, we would be able to pay that individual...
One second. No, no, I got it. So are you planning to change that person's entire salary to come out of the revolving fund?
No.
Okay, then that was one second. That's what I'm saying. That's what she said. She wants to pay overtime for this employee from the revolving fund that's, um, budget, um, salary comes out of an operating...
Just the overtime portion.
Right. No, no, I get that. Just the overtime. Their, their regular salary comes out of the operating account.
Correct.
You want to just pay them overtime. And that's what I'm saying, that's conflicting with this language.
No.
One second, let him answer.
It's kind of lesser. It's, it's allowed. She could also play, pay wages out of it as, as well, if, for a full-time employee. You can only pay the wages of a full-time employee out of a revolving fund if you also make available the fringe benefits as well. So that opens up the possibility of paying wages out of it. They're choosing not to do that with this employee, but it just is allowing it. What, what the statute says is you cannot pay the wages of a full-time employee out of a revolving fund unless you also pay for their fringe benefits. It doesn't mean that she couldn't also do this for the, to pay the overtime.
But this change is saying fringe benefits of full-time employees, which you're saying is overtime, one of them, whose salaries are paid from the fund shall also be paid from the fund. It's not saying anything about fringe benefits for, for an employee who's being paid by the operating budget. Is being paid, one second, Susan. Is being paid by the operating budget. That's what she's looking for, is to pay just the overtime to this union employee that's under operating budget. And I'm just reading this saying, I am not seeing how that connects between the two and how you opened it. One sec, I just want...
She's paying a fringe benefit. You can't pay the fringe benefit unless we allow it.
So...
But the fund shall not use, to pay compensation of any full-time or benefit-eligible employee. I got that. So now you're saying, though, the words say fringe benefit of full-time employees whose salaries are paid from the fund. This individual's salary is not paid from this fund. I, I didn't think it was either, but that's what she talked about. She can't pay this person overtime.
Right. But fringe benefit and overtime are two different things. They're two different things.
Yeah. Overtime. So go back to the overtime.
So overtime is just a portion of that individual's salary. Fringe benefits are all the health benefits and things of that nature. So there's no, there are no fringe benefits associated with overtime. So what, how the bylaw states now is I cannot pay that individual overtime because they are a full-time employee. I'm not, I'm asking to pay, if they were a part-time employee, I could pay them out of the fund. But because this particular position is a full-time employee, I cannot pay overtime out of that because of the way it's stated right now, that you cannot, anybody that's a full-time employee, their wages cannot come out of that. But the fringe benefits are a different issue.
Yeah. Yeah. No, no, it's just, we had a conversation in, about fringe benefits and how it's defined, and that included overtime. So that's why I was saying it doesn't work that way. So, okay. Yes, go on that, and then I'll let Mr. Keating get up.
Thank you. So just to clarify a couple of things that Ms. McKinnon had stated, um, a lot of the things that she brought up are very good points, and unfortunately, none of them are not hundred percent accurate, and I can explain how that works with the revolving fund. So a couple of things that work with programming. So one of the reasons, as money comes in, how programs are designed and the fees are designed are based off of what we expect and anticipate the program, the full program is going to cost. So a lot of times, we do hire outside instructors, or we have a part-time employee, um, seasonal employee that comes in and runs a program. That is true. And, and it is not true that we do, only do seasonal programming. We do year-round programming. The recreation department runs programs all year round. There are many other communities around here close to us, Pembroke, Plymouth. A lot of their program, uh, instructors are actually paid out of their revolving fund, and they are full-time employees. And what that does allow is exactly the opposite of what Ms. McKinnon stated. It actually, by creating those opportunities, it allows for us to give us the possibility that we can actually charge less for some of our existing programs, because that person is already there, so they can run multiple programs. Right now, the way it works is when we run a program, we have to hire an outside contractor, an outside instructor, and a lot of times, their fees are much higher, and we don't have as much control over them. With having a full-time employee, and again, this is only a portion of the reason that we're asking to do this, but if we were able to have a full-time program instructor, we could have them teach many, many programs, and it wouldn't be at additional cost. So we could offer programs for less money than we're able to offer our community right now. And that's what a lot of other recreation departments do in, in their communities. And again, going back to changing this back, I would just like to reiterate that this was the way that the bylaw stated for at least the nineteen years that I've been the recreation director. That is, the bylaw has always stated that full-time employees, and that is the way the bylaw is written for the state of Massachusetts, that full-time employees can be paid out of revolving fund, because it does provide a mechanism so that we do not have to go to operating budget and ask for more money. So a couple of those things, just for clarification. The other thing is that, um, again, with money coming in and money going out, the way the revolving funds are created and the way that they're meant to be is as the money comes in, again, you create an opportunity for that funding source. The money comes in, in anticipation of that money, exact same money that came in for those program fees goes back out to pay those particular program instructors, supplies, things like that. It's revolving. The money comes in for that program, and then we estimate that exact same money going out. So there'll never be an opportunity, it's, that the money that is going to continue to dwindle, and then we're not going to have a revolving fund. That's why they were created, so that we don't go to the operating budget and ask for more money. And as far as the, um, let's see, the last thing was, uh, again, the increase in the dollar amount, the three hundred and five thousand approximate dollars. Since I've been the recreation director, we started out with a revolving fund of less than a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the reason that increases every year is because we're offering more programs to our community. We're providing more services. We're providing more opportunities. We're, we're just giving the community a lot more opportunities. So again, as those opportunities come in, more money comes in, and that same money goes back out to those particular programs. The money comes in, the money goes back out. It's supposed to be a wash right there, how that goes. And that's exactly what the revolving funds were created for.
Thank you, Ms. Woodworth. I'm going to have Mr. Keating, and then I go up to you.
Can I stick on the OPEB thing? I'm sorry.
Um, no, not now. Um, go, um, to Mr. Keating and then to that gentleman.
And this is very brief, but, and respectfully, you know, the committee, the finance committee, we believe that, you know, if, if you want to solve for these needs, that the appropriate thing would be to request to have it added to the operating budget. And, um, you know, that would simplify things and, and ensure that we're, you know, having to, to some degree oversight as to how this money's being sent, spent rather, and also provide the greatest degree of transparency that this town, uh, should have. That's it.
Thank you. Um, Sarah, I've got a lot of people, um, that have been waiting. I'll give you, go ahead.
Sure. Matthew Sullivan, sixteen Ocean Hill Drive. Um, my kids have been great benefactors of the recreational department. Uh, I think you guys do a great job, and it sounds to me like you're doing a wonderful job as a manager of that department advocating, and you've come up with a solution to solve your financial needs. However, I think the solution is flawed. Uh, I agree with the gentleman that just got up and spoke in that, um, when you're looking for additional funds, if you have, uh, an employee that you cannot creatively arrange their schedule to solve the staffing needs that you have, then you need to figure out another solution. The one that you've brought to us today, I don't think is an acceptable solution for all of us, only because it impacts not just your department, but every other department in the town of Kingston. So on that merit, I have to urge the, the people here tonight to vote against your, your proposed solution. But I do commend you for your, bringing it to our attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Ms. O'Donnell?
Yes, I'd like to move the question, please.
Um, I am going to give Ms. Woodworth one attempt, um, and very briefly, if you may, on the OPEB issue, just because I cut her off on the OPEB issue, just for clarification.
Sure. I know there has been a concern also from the finance committee and also our, um, town treasurer with regard to the OPEB liability. Most of the other communities, again, do evaluate, do an evaluation, evaluation. I don't have that area of expertise of how that's determined, but other communities, I know the town of Plymouth, they do, do an evaluation for that OPEB, which is also still paid out of that revolving fund. So again, there is that opportunity to have all of these concerns that they have with regard to the OPEB valuation and the additional fringe benefits. regard to the OPEB valuation and the additional fringe benefits. In regard to transparency, just again, the revolving-
Oh, no, I had you on OPEB. That's it.
That was it.
Thank you. All right. Ms. O'Donnell, you moved the question. Do I have a second on that move the question?
Aye.
All those in favor of moving the question and no further debate, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion to move the question carries. Ladies and gentlemen, on the original motion of Article VI, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Let's count it. Can I borrow your green card again for a second? I've got to go check in. One sec. I'm not, I'm just, you guys aren't counting yet? I haven't called it. I just asked you guys to come forward.
Armstrong.
I know. Mr. Armstrong, you're jumping the gun here. I told you to be quick and efficient, but. All those in favor of Article VI, green card in the air. All those in favor?
Twenty-five.
Mr. Bazler's twenty-five. Mr. Pepe?
Twenty-six.
Mr. Pepe's twenty-six. Mr. Armstrong?
Nineteen.
Mr. Armstrong is nineteen. Ladies and gentlemen, all those in opposition to Article VI, green card in the air.
Twenty-six.
Mr. Bazler's twenty-six. Mr. Pepe?
Fourteen.
Mr. Pepe is fourteen. Mr. Armstrong?
Twenty-two.
Pardon me?
Twenty-two.
Two-two?
Seventy-two.
Seventy to sixty-two.
Yep, that's, I'm just double-checking. Ladies and gentlemen, the motion carries with seventy in favor and sixty-two in opposition. Mr. Bazler's moving to reconsider.
Seconded.
That being seconded. And ladies and gentlemen, if you want to open up debate and debate it further, you vote aye. If you don't want to open debate and that it be done, it's a no. So all those in favor of reconsideration, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion does not carry. Moving on to Article VII, Mr. Keating. Mr. Keating? Oh, sorry.
I'm short.
Motion for Article VII.
Sorry, I've got to see what I can read. Move that the town vote to accept the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 13D, to establish a reserve fund for the future payment of accrued liabilities for compensated absences due to any employee or full-time officer of the town upon termination of the employee's or full-time officer's employment, and further to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $10,000 to be expended under the direction of the town accountant.
Seconded.
Mary?
Mary?
I think you've got to, you've got to choose where the funds are coming from on that-
Because you have raise and appropriate or transfer. So you have to say where it's coming from, because the budget's already-
This is from free cash.
So transfer from free cash?
Yes.
Friendly amendment there?
Friendly amendment. Accepted.
Okay, so it's going to read further to transfer from free cash.
Free cash.
You got that? Okay. The sum of $10,000 to be expended upon the direction of the town accountant. Okay, you accept that friendly amendment?
Accepted.
All right. Do I have a second? Having a second on that, ladies and gentlemen, I have Board of Selectmen favorable action 500, and I have Finance Committee favorable action 400. Ms. McKinnon?
This article attempts to set up a savings account for potential future expenses. The purpose is to set aside funds when there is a need to pay accrued benefit time to employees who separate their employment from the town of Kingston. For example, a couple of years ago, we had an assessor who retired from the town of Kingston, and we had to pay over $30,000 in accrued benefits. Our town accountant, who had retired a couple of years ago, also accrued benefits in the amount of over $30,000. And this year, our health agent retired, and we had to come up with over $20,000 to pay back accrued benefits. What this article attempts to establish to do is to just create a reserve fund and start to allocate $10,000 for the payment of those future expenses. There are some employees that we have employed by the town that have tenure, that have long tenure with the community and have accrued benefits, and we are just trying to set up a reserve fund to begin to have some funds available to pay those future expenses.
Thank you, Ms. McKinnon. Any debate? David Fuller, 233 Country Club Way.
I'm in favor of this article solely because the Finance Committee is in favor of this article. I know absolutely nothing about this, just like many of the other articles. I don't know the ins and the outs. The Finance Committee works very hard and does their due diligence on these articles, and they know more than most everyone else in this room. So if they say they're for it, nine times out of 10, I'm for it, too. I find it hard to believe that we don't go with their decision more times than not. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fuller. Any further debate? Seeing none? Ladies and gentlemen, all those in favor, one second, one second. We're establishing a reserve fund. Is that also just a majority vote? Okay. Just checking the vote count. All those in favor of the motion on Article VII, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?